States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, which includes superintendent agenda item number thirteen personnel consent agenda two H I J K three A and B.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Weber.
Mr. Comifer.
Hi.
Mrs. Bidder.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
And Mr. Ballant.
Hi, agenda passes. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I actually had a correction to the minutes. It's a very small one, but it's on page two. Under discussion Board of Education rules and responsibilities. Mr. Comifer think Mrs. Weiss for her leadership as president in 2022 that should read 2021.
Good catch.
Only want you to have credit for 2021.
I will also take credit for 2022. No, I will not. Thank you.
I believe I mentioned both 2020 and 2021.
Oh, thank you.
So we're gonna make the revision. I would ask for that.
Any other additional comments?
Yeah, we are.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mr. Comifer.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
And Mrs. Bidder.
Hi.
I'd like to start off our meeting by looking just reading our mission and vision so that, you know, we keep in mind during our meeting that everything this board does is, you know, per the mission and vision of our district. So our mission is to cultivate a culture of academic excellence through inclusive and innovative learning opportunities for the whole child. And our vision is to empower all learners to reach their full potential in a global competitive world. I think it's important that we keep these in mind as we as we move through our meeting. Mrs. Weber, would you like to talk about our meeting protocol?
Thank you, Mr. Ballant. Mr. Fritz, if you could go on to the next slide, please. Thank you to all of you who are here in our audience this this evening, as well as those of you who are attending virtually this evening. We are going to be allowing for both virtual and for in-person participation this evening. For those of you who are attending virtually, you can access the Board of Education agenda on the Board of Education page. Once approved, the minutes that were just approved this evening will also be posted there for your review. This evening, for those of you who might have comments, who have requests to make a public participation comments or want to address the board based on any agenda items, please send this public participation request to our moderator this evening, Mr. Bill Fritz. His email address is fritzw@sycamoreschools.org. We do have the chat available. However, we ask that you only use that for technical difficulties. That should not be used for public comment or criticisms. We just ask that you use that to make us aware if you we have issues potentially with audio or video, so on and so forth, so that we can make those corrections. Thank you so much, Mr. Ballant. I think that's it for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Mr. Lewis, I'll turn it over to you.
I will happily go to the podium. And, you know, it's with great pride and honor that I get to stand up here and and thank you as school board members. Some of you, it's a very short time as school board members, but nonetheless, January is School Board Recognition Month and whether you've already been here years or, you know, weeks, you're going to find out that school board work is difficult work, but it's rewarding work. And getting to spend time with teaching staff, with our support staff, being visible, being throughout the district, supporting our student athletes, supporting our musicians, our theater program. You're going to get to see the whole scope of being a board member and what how that how how important that is, not only for our school district, but also for our community as a whole. And and you are the liaisons between the community and the school district. So just wanted to take the opportunity to thank all of you for your commitment, what you do for our district, all the all the things that people don't see behind the scenes. I think many people out in our community believe that, oh, it's a two two meeting a month commitment. No, it's much more than that. They don't see the number of hours that you spend with us on the phone, having conversations about how to improve the district. They don't see all the things that you do to support us in our roles and making sure that we have what we need. And they certainly don't see, you know, the number of meetings and committees, and they only have to look back at the organizational meeting to know that there are a number of committees and ways that you serve and the number of hours that you put into this role. So you know, it's certainly not meant to be a full-time job, but sometimes at different times, it feels like a full-time job plus the one that you already have for many of you. So what I can say about all five of you is that getting to know some of you and then knowing some of you for a number of years, that you are so passionate about school dish, the school district and the students and our staff. And I I think it goes without saying that we all have a huge appreciation for the things that you do to build the support for the district, the decisions, the tough decisions that we have to make together. And realistically, you guys are a big part of that culture that we tried to develop, which has been that home team culture that we have so desperately desired over the last number of years. And it's tough when you work together as closely as we do there. You're not always going to agree, and that's okay. Good teams don't always agree. And good teams are able to respectfully disagree, but get back in the room and make the best decisions for kids and and for our staff members. And and you all five do that. And I've already seen that from the two new board members. So we would like to take the opportunity to we have certificates for you. So I want to call you up one by one. And then we also have a nice gift for you. And if you could hold opening the gift until after, we'd like to have all five of you open it at the same time. Sure. Our resident photographer, Mr. Level, is ready so they can all go up front and and stand together. So first, Mr. Ballant. Mrs. Bidder. You have to avoid the triple. And Mr. Comifer. Dr. Steger. And last and certainly not least, Mrs. Weiss. Now, Mrs. Weiss, I'm going to have you come stand next to me for a few minutes. Maybe a 30 seconds, but I I have to have just an opportunity, thank you, to talk a little bit about about you. And and I believe that you just deserve some special recognition because, Mrs. Weiss, you endured two years as board president during unprecedented times. You supported us all the way, having numerous hours of conversation offline. Anytime we needed you, where you were always available via text, via phone call, whenever we needed you, you were there and supporting us and holding us up, propping us up, bringing us treats, scones, you know, just whatever we needed to keep morale high. And it would it would be, we would be remiss to not recognize you, especially for your two years as board president. The number of meetings that you attended, the number of things that you did for us. But I can say personally for me, helping me navigate those first few months as a superintendent, a brand new superintendent, and even though I had plenty of experience being in the district, there is nothing like experiencing that new role with an experienced partner that really cares not only about me personally, my family, but about this district and about this great team of leaders. So we so appreciate you, and we're so glad that you're going to continue to serve with us. And we are lucky and blessed to have you as a leader on our school board. So thank you. So now we will let you unveil this fantastic gift that we have for you. And I tried to steal it and Carla would not let me. So it is a nice, very nice blanket. Brad, don't worry. Miss Mrs. Comifer is going to steal that one from you quick quickly. So so again, thank you, school board, and we appreciate you. And and believe me that this small gift and this small recognition is not enough for the work that you're going to do over the next 12 months. But we appreciate everything that you do for us. And and now we got to get back to work. So yes, one group photo. And and you know, since the rest of the team is here, let's all join them. Let's join them as a team.
Mr. Lewis, on behalf of the board, thank you very much.
I'll pass your thank you along to Mrs. Clark, because she's always so critical in this endeavor to find the the right gift. So.
She is a good gift finder.
She is good.
Moving on to our superintendent, it's a Janet. Our first item is our healthy, healthy AIDS update. Mr. Lewis.
I will just add, we did not have any public participation requests.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now, Mr. Lewis.
All right, healthy AIDS. So, you know, I I want to, you know, we've we've thanked the board several times, but I have to give you one additional thank you. And I I know that you hired me because, you know, you think I have a lot, some skills and abilities that would be helpful to this district. I can say that I was not able to confidently predict that the two collaboration days that you approved could have been put at a better time. That we needed a kind of a break from the district to go off and do some some remote items because of our case numbers. But so I I do want to provide you an update on our case numbers and and give you, you know, some comparison data to look at. We like to look at data, and it definitely informs our decision making. And, you know, the the decision to put ma- masks back on was a difficult one. And I know that you all understand that, that it's a painstaking process that we have to really think about what's best for our school district. And that is always at the core of what we do. Keeping students in school is always at the core of what we do and making sure that our staff and students feel safe and protected to be able to conduct their business. So what you see on the screen is as of this morning now. So cases that came in after, you know, as of today would not be reflected on this. But this is as of this morning, we had 195 students that are in isolation due to positive COVID status, 34 staff. And then we have 71 students in quarantine and one staff, and you you can kind of see the dashboard trend data to the right. But if you look to the bottom, I think it's important to look at, okay, we have 266 students that are either positive or in quarantine. So that's about 4.7% of our student body. And then you can see below 35 out of 840. And I I will say that the the student population went up by two since the last time I reported, which was 5673. So those numbers are reflected at the bottom and just wanted you to see those percentages. Mr. Fritz, if he could go to the next slide. In comparison, just, you know, less than a week ago on the morning of 113 2022, there were 243 students in isolation due to being positive and 158 students in quarantine. So you can see the number was 401 out of 5670, 5673. So we were up at 7% last week. So you can see we have come back down a little bit. The numbers are still a little high in our upper grades that, you know, we'd like to see those numbers come back down a little bit further. Obviously, we continue to analyze the data every day. And then you can still see on the screen that the staff data had was still escalated. I think our highest numbers of staff were in the 50s that were out at one time. So we've come back down into the 30s of staff, and that's encouraging. From what we're hearing from our experts that we work with, we're still probably a week or two away from the peak. So, you know, we're trying to manage the best we can while keeping kids safe and keeping our students safe, keeping our staff safe. And our our intent and our goal is to stay in session. So, Mr. Fritz, next slide, please. So this is just, you know, the week by week breakdown, and you can see very clearly at the end there, as we started to trend into after the holidays, how high the case numbers went. So, you know, nearly double. And and again, these were record case numbers. So I think we felt strongly that we had to take some action to really prevent what we're seeing in a lot of the other districts is closures, remote learning shortages, staff shortages. And, you know, I I had a number of community members and staff members come up to me and say, you know, thank you for making that call. And I know it wasn't easy. No, if you could could have seen me on that Sunday, making that call, I was not in a good place. And, you know, my, I felt bad for my my young, young men that live with me that said, Dad, are you okay? No, it's tough. You know, these are tough decisions. They they wear on you. And and certainly, I know they wear on all of us as a team. But I think at the end of the day, we made the correct decision to try to slow the spread and bring the numbers back down. So at the end of the line, there are just the first two days of this week of reporting. And I think it's important to note that we're obviously not in session right now. Not until tomorrow, but the numbers have come back down as of right now. We'll see what happens when we report back to school. But overall, encouraging to see lower numbers, or at least the slowing down of the numbers. And this is just that breakdown. I tried to provide the same charts of positive cases. And thank you, a huge thank you to Mrs. Spencer. In the middle of all her work, she continues to update these charts and information so that we can report accurate information to our community. But, you know, just another chart that shows you the school by school breakdown. And then this was just be the school by school breakdown of the close contacts. So, you know, not much else there other than there's a number of students that are identified. Think about if we weren't in the mode that we are in now with how we identify and deal with quarantine of close contacts, how many students we would have out versus how many students actually had to quarantine. I mean, if you look at just the high school alone, 351 students as close contact and only 14 had to quarantine from 110 to 116. So, you know, it's tremendous work. And I'm glad that, you know, we were able to change and see that that change in the quarantine guidelines and the impact to our students. Next slide, Mr. Fritz. And, you know, I I'm not happy to to report that we're in the top 10 on this list, but this was a story that was put out on on 114, and I believe it was from a Cleveland area newspaper or news outlet that showed the top 10 schools, school districts for reported cases. And we were number nine. What I would say about that is, and I I would say it's a huge credit to Mrs. Spencer and her team that are contact tracing and accurately reporting. I I would not believe that based on our enrollment that we were one of the top 10 in the state. I would say we're probably a top 10 that are reporting, but I have no information to back that up. That's just my anecdotal guess because, you know, we're 245 and 29 staff out of our number of students and staff is pretty low. But you can see some of those other numbers up there. And you know, again, we're we're focused on doing what we can do to do our best job that we can do. And and I think, again, we made the decisions we had to make when we had to make them. And, you know, I'm happy to defend them at any point because I think, again, we're we're focused on keeping our students in school and in session and keeping our staff safe and in session teaching. We know that's the best education that we can deliver. And then just a couple of, I did not, I cannot take credit for these graphs, but I thought it would be important for you to see some of the county data because I know that people reach out to you. And, you know, obviously, our school data has been the focal point for us. But I did think it was important for you to see, if you just look over, you know, the pandemic, or at least, you know, the timeframe of the pandemic, you can see that this has been the highest case numbers in the county. And so when people are saying, I can't believe you're doing this action or that action, I think this graph shows why we would have to take action. And so, you know, I'm not happy about the numbers. I don't want people to get sick. I'd like it to go bottom out again, and let's get back to normal. But that's not our reality right now. So I think that's critically important to show. And then our next slide is just, you know, when we look at, and I, again, I borrowed these from Hamilton County, but these are COVID positive patients in Region Six hospitals. And then you can kind of see, it says 987 confirm in the orange colored to the right there with the small type, 192 in ICU and 146 on ventilators. And then next slide is going to be just something that overlays this slide. But this came straight from the Hamilton County Public Health Department, you know, ending January 12th of 2022, 95.2% of COVID hospitalizations are unvaccinated. So I'm encouraged that our district has a high rate of vaccination because I really don't want any of our students, our staff, or our community members being hospitalized. And, you know, that's that that's certainly a scary thing for our community. But taking those precautions and and thinking about those things and making best decisions for you and your family are certainly up to our residents and our our school, community members. But we want to protect and keep our Sycamore family members safe. And then a couple other slides. I thought this was important. I'm, I'll see how it affects my drive over in over in the Weller Park area. But there is a free COVID-19 drive-through testing at Weller Park Thursday and Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So I I can only assume, you know, I'm not well-versed in the Weller Park area. But if it's a drive-through, either either they're not coming back out the same way, or they maybe they're cutting through the church parking lot to get back out. But irregardless, a huge thank you to the City of Montgomery for setting this up with the Ohio National Guard and, you know, opening this site for our community. So you know, they'll be getting that started. And, you know, I guess we'll see how how that goes. And if people utilize that, I'm I'm going to guess that it'll probably get utilized pretty, pretty well. And that's a good location to get in and out of and to be able to get their concerns addressed. If people have had them. So I know we've heard that COVID tests are in tough demand, but it seems like even from our doctors have talked about the Ethos lab has been readily available to get tested. So just some information that I thought was important to share. The other thing I would say about COVID testing, we're going to send something out in our upcoming communication, our upcoming healthy, upcoming healthy AIDS weekly update. I got something. I'm trying to remember who sent it to me, but irregardless, it was something from the postal. I think it was Dr. Davis, actually, that sent it to me was through a text. It was from the postal service that you can order four free in-home tests that will be sent to your home. So I did it. It was very easy. And literally, in three minutes, you get confirmed, and it says you'll be, these will be shipped very soon. So and they are free. So we are putting that information out and making that available as well. So the last thing for the healthy AIDS report is a change in the quarantine guidelines that and, you know, I want our community to understand and just hopefully give us some grace of when we were coming back from break. I think we all knew and in our heart of hearts that certainly people gather and they're having, you know, holiday gatherings. And I think there we expected that the case numbers were going to be escalated. I don't know if any of us would have predicted that they escalated as much as they did because of the presence of the Omicron variant. But our guideline, the CDC guidelines that that had changed and, you know, really were able to be implemented if we so were ready to choose to implement them. Our team was overwhelmed with contact tracing, with all the other factors going into dealing with the positive cases. We just did not feel it was responsible for us at that time to implement those new guidelines. So tomorrow starts the third quarter. We have talked, and we believe that the time is right to start the implementation of those new guidelines. And, you know, again, Mrs. Spencer and her team, you know, being the responsible people that they are are prepared to go back and look at the most recent positive cases and address anybody that would be impacted by these new guidelines and allow them to follow the new guidelines. So I want you to know that these these charts, we were able to use these from ODH. And I do believe they're probably the easiest way to understand it. I've seen other charts that are very convoluted. But so if you have COVID-19, regardless of symptoms or vaccination status, these are the new guidelines. You have to stay home for the next five days regardless of what your symptoms or vaccination status are. You know, they're recommending you stay away from people. And if you can't stay away, you wear a three-layer or better mask. If do, you know, the question is, do you have a fever that haven't started to get better on day six? If yes, you have to stay home until your fever is gone or other symptoms are better and wear a mask for the next five days. So if you are still having symptoms, you are not able to come back after day five. If you are done having symptoms, then you can come back. You can resume your activities, but you have to wear a mask and you have to wear a mask for the next five days. Obviously, this is something that we'll have to track currently in a mask required environment. It's very easy to track because everyone should be wearing a mask. The question would come up if a COVID positive person wants to come back after five days and they have a mask exemption. They cannot come back unless they're wearing a mask. So they would have to stay out the full 10 days. Okay, Mrs. Spencer shook her head, so I know I'm in good shape.
There will be a quiz later, Chad.
That's right. We have that prepared for all five of you. That's part of Board Appreciation Month. So what what to do if you were exposed to someone that has COVID-19 and your COVID-19 vaccines are up to date? And now, when I say COVID vaccines are up to date, the CDC is very clear on what that means. So if you are in age bracket that a booster is available and you have not been boosted, you are not up to date. So if you've had, let's say you've had two COVID vaccines, but not the booster, and it's available, you're not up to date, you revert back to the other guidelines. If you have received your booster dose of any COVID-19 vaccine or, you know, all these other pieces, it talks about the Moderna, it talks about the Johnson and Johnson. If you test and you can go over to the right for 10 days, wear a mask around others for 10 days after your last, your last exposure. Test on day five. If you develop symptoms, you have to stay home. And then down below, if you tested positive for COVID-19 in the 90 days before your exposure, you have to wear a mask for the 10 days. If you develop symptoms, again, get tested, stay home. But again, if you've just been exposed, but you're not positive, wear a mask and monitor your symptoms. All right, Mrs. Spencer shaking her head again. So we're in good shape again. And then, you know, lastly, if you were exposed to someone and COVID had COVID-19, you were unvaccinated or your vaccines are not up to date, then again, you look at all the different vaccinations, the different pieces that you can might fall into one of these categories for five days, stay home for five days after your last exposure, then you have to wear a mask for five days. Test on day five. Again, if you've developed symptoms, you have to stay home. So what what changes does this make? It shortens basically the quarantine guidelines from a 10-day to a five-day if you follow these guidelines, if you follow these additional pieces that they've put into place. If you are unwilling to do that, you're still under the the previous 10-day guideline of quarantine and monitoring symptoms. So you know, our biggest thing is we're still going to ask our families to monitor symptoms, you know, really do those self-checks, the self-assessments before you would send someone in. You know, we really don't want people sending in questionable, you know, if you're not sure, you know, take that extra caution, make sure before you send a student in because that'll help us stop that spread. take that extra caution, make sure before you send a student in, because that'll help us stop that spread. Mrs. Spencer, did I miss anything? Just to make sure that I explained it correctly. Okay. Any questions from the board about any of the healthy Aves update or the quarantine guidelines?
Mr. Lewis, will a communication go out to the parents um, about the new guidelines?
Yes, so uh, Mrs. Krasachek is working on our next healthy Aves update. Um, I, I, as part of that, we'll send this part out immediately so that people understand the new quarantine guidelines. We will also include it in the upcoming um, healthy Aves update. That healthy Aves update will also address, because you know, obviously we're sitting here today on a Wednesday. Our mask required mandate is through Friday this week. Uh, we will look at the numbers at the end of the week and make informed decisions going forward into next week. If you were asking me sitting here today, what would be the decision based on the elevated number still, we would still be in a mass required environment. But I need to see Thursday and Friday data to, to make that decision. And again, now that we're back in this mode, we're going to be in a week-to-week decision-making process. So I think you asked at the last meeting, Mr. Ballant, what's the level of communication families can expect to get a weekly communication? Whether it be just a written s'more or a video update, but uh, we will give out some communication each week.
Thank you.
I have some questions.
Sure.
If, if a student or a staff comes back early, let's say five days, because they were able to do that based on their information, um, and they have, and then they arrive at school or anyone and they have symptoms, what happens?
So if they're symptomatic, based on the guidelines, they would have to get the test. Because that, that test is going to inform what's the next steps that we have to take. So um, there's a, a, a difference between whether or not if they test positive and then they would go into uh, the guidelines for testing positive and being a positive COVID case. Or if they develop symptoms, but they don't test positive, they would have to mask and continue to mask until they don't have symptoms any longer.
I'm sorry, I guess what I mean is if they tested positive, they went into quarantine for five days and they came back. Or they, they, they came back after five days. Um, but they thought they weren't symptomatic and they went through the steps, but then they show up at school and they're sneezing and coughing.
Yeah, that's easy.
Then what?
Then we would send them back home to, until they're asymptomatic.
And we, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Cause they might not have a test to see if they still have COVID, right? That's what I'm guessing, asking.
If, if they've already had a positive test, they wouldn't need to test again. Uh, they would just have to stay home until those symptoms have subsided.
And I have a couple of other non-related to that question. Preschool, are they included in any of this information? Are they in Mapledale or in Blue Ash's numbers? Okay, so um, and then, but also are they included in the data that we have for a- all the things that we have in the LTA's? Okay, and then last question.
This has been a really quickly, just because Mrs. Spencer is off, you know, they, no one online can hear her. So um, Mrs. Spencer's response to the question was that uh, the, the preschool students are not included in the ability to uh, not quarantine, so they would have to follow the ten-day quarantine guidelines. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
And then my last question is, we had a vaccine booster clinic, um, we had the, we had to cancel that. Um, are we planning to reschedule that at any point for families that might not be able to get, you know, shots for their kids? Um, is, are we making that available for our community?
And, and we will do our best to work with Hamilton County. Actually, Hamilton County canceled due to resources. Um, and, and so we can reach back out and see if they have the ability to uh, put that back into play for us. But, oh, you already have. Okay, well, good. You've put the request in. Okay, that's fantastic. But have we heard anything back from them on? Okay. Okay, that's awesome.
I have a couple of quick questions. Um, has Hamilton County released the vaccination rate numbers for all eligible students five and up? Like from kindergarten basically to seniors in high school?
They have not. It is still privately protected information, but they did give us some positive feedback that they believe that um, it is going to be able and be available uh, very soon. So I, I have another call this Friday with uh, the commissioner and um, the doctor that worked for Hamilton County. And I will follow up with, but he, uh, I've asked, I think they're getting tired of me asking. So they did follow up that, actually, we got an email with all the superintendents in the area. And they said they did check and they do believe it's going to be become available to us. So that would be huge for us to be able to release to our community so that they can get a feel for, you know, that's going to be the biggest question. Because if our case numbers fall to a low number and we decide to remove that level of protection. I want people to be able to see the data to understand why we would make that decision.
And my next question is for students who are COVID positive, are teaching faculty and staff made aware? If a student has been tested positive, um, I know in other cases, a lot of medical information is not released to the teachers. So that they would know if there's somebody coughing perhaps that they were worried about. I'm just asking the question.
They're notified that the child will be out, but they are also very diligent about monitoring symptoms. And many of our teachers will refer a child to the nurse's office for an assessment. Um, and then maybe a phone call goes home to see if there was any recent exposure. The nurse can also look at whether or not that child was a recently a close contact, because they do have access to that information. So then can make an informed decision for that child and determine whether or not that child needs to go home.
Um, Mrs. Spencer, I, I just want to give you and your contact tracing team a huge shout out. Um, and I.
One of them is on a call, Susan Murphy.
I, I really try not to, I really try not to talk about my own family in school board meetings. But I, COVID hit our house. My high schooler tested positive. Everyone in the house tested negative. But I actually went through the process like any parent would, called the line, left a message or filled out the form, left a message. And within half an hour, Susan Murphy called me. She was on it. It was like nine thirty at night. And I thought, there was no way I was going to get a phone call. So professional, just, you know, knew what she was doing. Hoped Charlotte felt better. I mean, it was just fantastic. And I just want to commend you. All the nurses in our district and contact tracers, you guys have really embraced all of the changes that have come down the pike with how to do quarantines and keeping our community as safe as, as you can. And I just want to take my hat off to you because it has been remarkable.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chad, I have one more quick question, or Mr. Lewis, I have one more quick question for you. Um, that's, if we're going to drop masks, would there be an uh, possible option for say, a um, staff or faculty member to have a, an extension in their own classroom for masks to be required in that one space for medical reasons?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, okay, I'll use my own family situation. Um, if you had a child who's immunocompromised, who's had open heart surgery. And I say I was a teacher in the building and I wanted to keep my room masked for an extended period of time if I thought it was unsafe. Would that be an option?
That, that would not be an option to, you know, just keep one classroom or a select group masked. It would be a district-wide decision.
Thank you.
Or a, or a building-by-building decision, because we, we did commit at the beginning of this to look at the data for each school uh, individually. But um, if there were a building that were much higher than all the other ones, then you know, we've also talked about only making a decision for that building versus others. So uh, the, one of the issues that we have is, you know, and, and it's a constant thing we'll, we'll have to look at is we have a number of siblings that span across the district. And so you may be faring okay at the elementary school, but then they have a junior high student and that, you know, obviously they're in the same home. So those are the things obviously we take into account, but we're looking at the raw data, we're looking at the numbers and case numbers to make those data-informed decisions. But good question.
Okay, Ms. Lewis, thank you very much. Um, next item is Collaboration Day Update.
Yes, thank you uh, so much. And again, I, you know, I, I will tip the cap to uh, our tremendous teaching staff and our support staff and all the different things that people engage with for Collaboration Day. And um, I thought instead of hearing me talk about Collaboration Day, because you know, I'm sure, I know you love hearing my voice and it's very exciting to hear from me all the time. But I thought, why not hear from the professionals and the practitioners that actually participated in the Collaboration Day while I sat meetings, uh, a number of meetings all the last two days. So um, there are some fantastic teaching staff members that are on tonight. And thank you for being on to all of you, because I know you had a long day of collaboration and meetings and spending the last two days working with your colleagues. And I know that you all have things that you have to attend to, but um, I thought it would be best for you to hear uh, from these staff members. And we'll just go in order that's on the screen. So we'll start with Mrs. Steele, uh, who is a third grade teacher here at Mapledale.
All right. Hi, everybody. Um, thank you for this opportunity to express how productive these last two days have been. Um, teachers are always begging for the gift of time. And you know, it often takes subs and half-days away from your classroom in order to collaborate, you know, with different grade levels vertically with um, across the district. And so we were able to do every type of collaboration these last two days. Um, and we really valued that time because we know community members um, had to make some adjustments. And we really felt like it was a gift. Um, we started our day with some PD from Jen Green, learning about some new technology resources um, that third and fourth grade, um, and anybody who uses the ear test will be able to implement. Um, so that was really helpful. We worked with our district. I teach language arts. So we were able to meet with every language arts teacher, even the ones that had COVID, were able to join us virtually. Um, which was really nice to have everybody there. Um, we had vertical conversations, so third grade teachers met with second grade, met with fourth grade. Um, just, it's amazing what we were able to accomplish in one day. Um, and you know, it was funny, we actually even met with our new curriculum director, Becky Tompkins. So that was um, amazing. And our administrators kind of popped in to different meetings. And it was just really collaborative and um, it was a really efficient and effective day. And we, we just really, really appreciate it. And honestly, we thought we would go out to lunch because you know, that's the one dream that teachers have is to go and have lunch in a restaurant. Um, you know, during this workday. And ironically, the last two days, we picked up food, brought it back, we packed a lunch because we wanted to take advantage of every single second that we had. So honestly, it was very, it's very appreciated and it was honestly very productive. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Steele. Ms. Lefton, first grade teacher at Mapledale.
Hi, everyone. Um, just like Jen stated, we've been really busy at Mapledale the last two days. Taking every moment to work together to collaborate. We always pass each other in the hall like, we want to meet and do this to be better. And how can we support our first graders to be ready for second grade? Or the kindergarten teachers ask us what they need to do to support their kids to be ready for first grade. And we actually had two days to kind of take a deeper dive and discuss what our expectations are for our students. And with the new standard-based report cards, that's been like the big talk um, for us the past two days. Kindergarten's been doing it for several years. Um, we've been doing it for about three. And I know second grade is taking the first year for them this year, so we're kind of supporting them. Um, looking at agendas and we were looking at the standards to kind of create assessments to best kind of see how we can support our students on each standard, how we can adapt these assessments to give us the most accurate data of how our instruction is going. Um, looking at those assessments, we also looked at map data. Um, it was actually really awesome to take time and like spread across um, our classes individually to kind of collaborate and say, oh, what strand are you working on in math? How can we pull resources as a team um, to support the kids and place value? There's a group at this end, there's a group working on thousands. Um, so it's really important to take the time even just as a team to pull together our resources um, to support our students. So it's really helped us kind of push us forward for the rest of the um, semester to go ahead and get our kids ready for the end of the year and make sure they're where, where they need to be. Um, but like Jen said, it was really, really, really great to just take the time and learn from each other and meet with other excellent educators in our building that uh, we don't get to work with all the time. So it was really, really powerful. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lefton. Mr. Schwamburger from Montgomery Elementary, fourth grade.
Good evening, everybody. Um, it's nice to see you. I wanted to thank the administration as well as the board for giving us this time to collaborate. Because as we know, any collaboration time is at a premium and the deeper dive stuff can only happen when you've got time. So thank you for providing us that. I would reiterate what both um, of my colleagues at Mapledale said. I think that we dug a lot into the map data. We tried to assess where it was at. We met both horizontally and vertically. Um, both were excellent. I think for the first time in my twenty-five years at Sycamore, we actually um, met with fifth grade. And we talked with them about academics as well as social concerns. Uh, so I caught, my colleague Leslie Hella, give her a lot of credit for putting that meeting together. She reached out to Green. And we had um, a representative of the core subject areas there to have a conversation. And then uh, meeting with third grade as well um, at Montgomery was really powerful. I think the one thing that came out of both of those were we were able to discuss concerns about academics and deficits that we see um, going all the way up to fifth grade in that band of three to five, which was important. But we also discussed our concern for the students socially and um, you know, the effect that COVID has had on, you know, their ability to just be students and to follow the procedures, you know, that we kind of take for granted shouldn't be there. And I think we all agreed across the board that there, there's definitely been an effect on the student's ability to do that. Um, so we're all concerned about that as well, so beyond the academic scope of things. Chad, I did put together a uh, document that has a lot of the thoughts that my colleagues sent to me today. And we discussed in meetings that I'm more than happy to share with you as well, um, to kind of give you a feel of what we did more specifically. Um, the one thing that did come up that I thought I would share with you guys is if you were considering this next year, just as a thought, and I don't want to speak for the whole district, but um, it came up in our meetings that possibly one Collaboration Day following fall map results and then one following winter map results rather than two consecutive ones after winter, might be something to consider. That could be very helpful to give us two different times of the year to sit down and really dig deep and analyze things. One thing I will say is, you know, for many, many years at Sycamore, we did have that um, horizontal meetings and collaboration with other buildings, but that has kind of been um, by the wayside more or less the last four years for a number of different reasons. But it was really good to have that back again, even if it was virtual for us to discuss materials, discuss goals, um, where we think the kids are at right now and to kind of just project forward and also talk about where we're headed for third quarter. So once again, thank you very much for the time. We all appreciated it and we thought it was incredibly productive.
Thank you, Mr. Schwamburger. Mr. Tanaka, Junior High?
Yes, so I'm the uh, math department supervisor at the junior high and uh, we want to thank you so much for these last two days. Uh, for the math department specifically, we were able to collaborate through Google Meet um, with some support staff in regards to something called Layover. Um, it's a program to help students complete missing assignments so that um, they help master the concepts being taught. And as you know, similar to sports and hobbies, the more you practice, the better you get. So we were able to problem solve and find some solutions, which would not only just help the math department, but as a school as a whole. And unfortunately, a normal school day, there really isn't much time where we can all collaborate depending on our duties and responsibilities. We were also able to collaborate for those that co-teach with our special ed teachers and our ESOL teachers. Um, because again, due depending on our duties and our teaching bills, uh, most of the co-teachers don't have a common plan bell. So typically, we will meet once a week about fifteen or twenty minutes before school starts. And that's really not a lot of time to kind of talk. So these teachers had an opportunity to talk specifically about students and their caseloads, topics such as modified assessments, modified assignments, and then what worked this past semester and then what we need to adjust for this coming semester. And then more importantly, we were able to work within our department by grade levels and subjects. So we broke up into smaller groups. We had a seventh grade team, an eighth grade team, and the Algebra One team. And each of the teams looked at our last year's AIR results and reviewed our targeted standards. And then what we did is we adjusted our weekly learning guides, our common assessments and our weekly reviews to make sure that we're emphasizing those targeted standards. An example for us is Algebra One, since I'm in that team. Even though 100% of the students passed at the junior high, we still had about 50% that earned a zero out of one on a standard of solving systems of equations through elimination and substitution. We didn't know exactly what the question was because they didn't release it, but we at least knew it was about solving systems of equations. In addition, we also had about 51% earn a zero out of one on writing arithmetic and geometric sequences, specifically building a function that models a relationship between two quantity.
Mr. Tanaka, if you can hear me, you froze on our audio for a moment. So we're going to see if we get you back because you were on a roll. Kelly's down here jotting everything down.
Oh, am I going too fast?
No, you're, no, you were, you must have been on a roll because I think Zoom stopped you. It just, you were saying such good stuff, it couldn't keep up with you. So.
Where do I need to repeat myself then?
I think you were, I'm trying to remember the last thing that you, because you kind of froze.
I share about the department by the small groups.
You, Mr. Tanaka, you got cut off right when you were talking about the standard that related to solving systems of linear equations.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So for our Algebra One team, even though everyone passed the AIR test last year, we had 50% of the students earn a zero out of one on that particular question on solving systems of equations by elimination and substitution. And we didn't know exactly what that question was since it wasn't released. In addition, we had 51% earn a zero out of one on arithmetic and geometric sequences, specifically building a function that models a relationship between two quantities. So we've taught both those concepts already, but the good thing is that we are assigning weekly reviews and we can continue to add those. We've been adding those on our weekly reviews these next couple of weeks as we approach the AIR test. So again, we thank you so much. We did a lot of collaboration, as you can see, not just within the math department, but with, with the special ed co-teachers and then even the support staff. So we know it's going to have positive results as we end the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanaka. And unfortunately, Mrs. Shelt had some prior engagements that she had to attend to, but she did provide me just a written update. So Mrs. Shelt is at the junior high. She is the English Language Arts Department Supervisor. So she gave a couple of things. So I'll just briefly read it. She said, "I'd like to take a moment to thank the board and the administration for providing teachers the opportunity to collaborate over the last two days. These days have provided invaluable opportunities for teachers to work together to help better serve the needs of our students. The junior high language arts teams use this time in many different ways. Our eighth grade team took the opportunity to meet with the ninth grade team to discuss the transition to high school, how our students can be better, best prepared to make that leap. Best of all, not only did we have a discussion with the high school team, but we had the time to take the conversation into reality and create learning opportunities for students in response to the collaborative conversation. Our eighth grade team then worked to create individualized goals for students based on where they are and where they need to be for future success. Our seventh grade team took the time to review our error and updated map data to identify the weaknesses and strengths of our students. Then we worked together to do a comparison and progress check of our students by examining our standard based mastery data for classroom assessments and assignments. Again, best of all, we had time to respond to dig, to the data dig. We evaluated the trajectory of our curriculum and in response to the data we discovered, we targeted standards on a more personalized level and we developed lesson plans to reteach in response to student needs." I was just looking at my colleague. I can feel her. She's like ready to just jump up and down. So. And she said, "I'm so proud of the work that we, that was accomplished during this time. I'm so grateful to work for a district that values supports and provides the collaborative uninterrupted time needed to ensure our students are receiving the highest quality personalized learning possible." So now I can say with 100% confidence that, you know, our team at the district level is so thankful that our teachers advocated and our principals advocated for the teachers at the retreat. Because we all heard this in October, that this was a need. And you know, I think our team feels strongly that our job is to respond to the needs of our teachers and our students. And our teachers advocated that this was a need. And I think we've clearly heard the value of these days from our teachers. But I want to give the board an opportunity since they are still on. And I promise teachers that we will get you off in a couple of minutes, but, and let you go, get back to your nights. But I want to give the board an opportunity. If you have any questions for these fantastic educators, please feel free to ask them.
I'll, I'll start. If you had more time, what could you have done? Anything else you wish you had more time to do or any other thoughts or ideas that you would like to see in the future? I know one, I know that one of the teachers on here said something about splitting up the days. Is that what, is that some, give some kind of feedback like that as well, please. Thank you.
I can respond to that. I know we did a lot of data analysis, but we could have done some more planning of specific, you know, grouping kids to, you know, come up with a more specific plan about working with them and their growth areas. You know, we have plans, but I think we could have gone a lot deeper. We just received our AIR results not too long ago. And so we're just, you know, doing a lot of conversations about how to address these needs. So we, there's always more planning that can be done, more specific planning.
I was going to say, one thing to add would be having like a planned grade level meeting. I know other first grade teams had reached out from another building, but with all the meetings we had already planned, we didn't have enough time to meet vertically and horizontally and district wide. So I don't know if it would necessarily be, I just think it would be better that that was kind of planned out ahead of time. So we could kind of meet and figure that out through each of the buildings. So we had more time to kind of collaborate that way.
I was going to share, I saw on next year's calendar, we already have a couple of PD days set up in addition to our teacher workdays and at the end of the year. And we really appreciate that because, again, I know in my language arts counterpart, Sarah had an opportunity to meet with the high school and we really didn't have that opportunity these last two days. But for us, especially at the junior high, we would love to have some time to collaborate, not with just the high school, but also at the green. So there's multiple vertical articulation that we would love to do, but we just don't have that time. So I appreciate that. Next year, we already have a couple planned for the beginning of the school year and a couple at the end. Couple in the middle, I think would be ideal, especially like for us, we really kind of delved into the AIR test and really kind of saw where were our weaknesses in our standards and how can we implement that right away here in the next couple of weeks so that we can see results before the next one coming up.
I guess, I guess I'd just like to say thank you to, you know, all of you presented tonight and all the teachers who invested in our students all year, but particularly the last two days on these, these Collaboration Day efforts. It's greatly appreciated. I heard Mr. Schwamburger express that the one day F in the fall and the one day in the spring, right after the testing results would be ideal. I'm just curious for if that's the consensus of everyone that's on the call? Or if you could just all weigh in on that point?
I think that's a great idea. Honestly, we could definitely fill and overfill two days in a row. But you know, spreading it out would be a nice way, you know, for more frequent app, right after assessment. So I think that would be nice, but we'll take anything. We're thankful for everything.
Well, and, and Mr. Tanaka, Mrs. Steele, Ms. Lefton, Mr. Schwamburger and Mrs. Shelt. I know that the calendar, Mr. Tock is correct, the calendar has been developed for next year. We did not look at it with that lens, but certainly we can take a look and see if there's any flexibility. But we're so tight with all of our construction next year. But Mr. Tanaka is right, there's some days at the beginning because we had to kind of shrink the calendar. There's also, so I think there's three days at the beginning of the school year for professional learning. In addition to the two work, was it two workdays? I feel like, or?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a whole week of items that at the beginning, to be able to accommodate the staff workdays, there are two days in front of Thanksgiving that would be similar to what we just went through. Really looking at, you know, an opportunity to look at our scores. And then I think we do have a, a number of days at the end, at least a couple of days at the end as well. So but certainly for future calendars, this feedback is, is welcomed. And certainly, I know Mrs. Wagner and her team are in charge of developing the calendars. And you know, it's great to get this feedback now. So as we develop future calendars that we keep in mind, what are the needs of our teaching staff and the professionals that are doing the work every single day with our students? And how do we accommodate those needs? Because I do think, listening to all of you as professionals and knowing what you're bringing to us as the needs and, and the experiences that you've had over the last two days, the results are going to be there. Like, I was so encouraged to hear some of the strategies that you picked up from each other. And we always say, the best learning occurs from each other, not necessarily listening to a nationally renowned speaker as much as we love them. It's better to learn from each other and learn those strategies that are working with other classes and other groups in different school buildings. So I am excited to hear about more of these conversations. I know that we, we scratched the surface of what happened today and yesterday in our district with so many different professionals gathering and just some of the early responses that we've gotten from teachers has been just encouraging all around. So I promised you that we would let you get back to your evenings. So unless the board has any other questions, I would like to let these wonderful professionals get back to their evenings. But.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. And thank you to the rest of the teaching staff for your participation in the last two days. We really appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is master facility plan update.
All right. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. It is always a good evening when we are able to stand up here and talk about all the amazing things happening across the district. So it's fun to be able to come off of just so much excitement around the Collaboration Days. And so what we want to do now is talk about the spaces that support that collaboration and the learning that happens every day. So let's go ahead and get started. We'll start out with Sims tonight. And as usual, I like to stand up here and just let you know that as of this moment, we remain on time and on budget with our projects. And I'm excited to share with you that, like I have been saying, Sims is getting even closer to crossing that finish line. And so I feel like it's somewhat lingering, but we're pretty much cleaned up or at that place. So I've got a few things I want to share with you. So as you know, we had our final furniture delivery that showed up. We were able to get that furniture into those spaces. That would be our area A academic spaces. We also finalized our stage in the gym. We were able to clean up the wood floor. Just a reminder, our gym though goes under kind of the renovation this summer. So we'll be refinishing the floor, giving a paint job, kind of finalizing that once the kids are gone. But we do have our community groups such as SAC that are currently using that space. So we're able to get in there and use that. And so you can see some of the pictures up here of our classroom A, they're kind of in the back, that area A where we added on our ESOL rooms and the stage area, which you can see there on the right. See, on that far picture, right, you can see the stage. And I really encourage you, if you get a chance to take a, take a, take a visit over there and check it out. It is just phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal. And you can see here, these are two different pictures, one of a classroom in that area A there to the right. Obviously, we had the opportunity to go see the new Early Childhood Wing when we dedicated it earlier in the year. The rooms all look very familiar. I want to point out though, on the left, that picture there, I think it's always fun. That's the cafeteria. And if you remember, we had a wall that was missing at the beginning of the year. The wall is there now. So our wall is up and we're very excited about kind of finalizing that space. That wall is painted, but we will also be getting some graphics on that wall as well. All right, next slide. All right. So let's talk a little bit about green. You know, as we mentioned about green, we are getting closer and closer to the finish line for this project as well with the estimated opening coming for this fall. A few things just to recognize here that we continue to put our CMU and Masonry Brick Installation up in the envelope in area D. So you'll start to see area D, that area where the cafeteria is and the administrative building. So that far picture on the right there, you're actually looking into the cafeteria and the kitchen. Right, next slide. Again, you can kind of see how they're framing out the inside. I had an opportunity to do a tour not long ago. And I think I had mentioned to you previously, kind of the first floor, if I say areas, it's really hard to understand because we're not in it all the time. But when you go into the academic area on the first floor, you're seeing a lot of drywall go up. So it's really starting to take shape as you walk around in there and you start to see the decide, the defined spaces such as the extended learning areas that exist outside of our classrooms and spaces like that. Now they're moving towards the upstairs, the second floor to start to build that out as well with the drywall. Okay? You can see some of the aerial photos. Thank you to our partners at SHP. We're always thankful for them as they continue to give us shots, overhead shots of our building so we can see kind of the progress. What you're looking at there, obviously on the right, is the bigger newer section of the building, which is the academic area. So the drive in front of that area that's green there on that right photo, that is the bus lane. So that's where the buses will be coming in. The students will enter the building in that section. There on the left, you can see, looking at the front of kind of the administrative area, to the right there is the current cafeteria and the gyms. And so just as a reminder, we have the new building, but we're also going to be doing renovations after school starts on that. What's the current cafeteria, what will be kind of the music suite and then renovation of the gyms as well. So they're starting to tie that in. So it all is going to look very similar when it's complete. Right? Again, two more, two more views there. I love these drone shots. They give you a good perspective on kind of how that, that project is coming along. And you know, I think with green, the green school, obviously, the outside of this is going to look more and more complete. When we were there for our tours, they were mentioning that you're going to start seeing in the next month or so of the concrete that's going around the building. And so from an outside perspective, it's going to start to look finalized. But remember, there's a ton of work still going on inside. Crews continue to come, building that out and doing some of those final pushes, putting flooring and things like that in. Okay? Moving on to the junior high, we'll go ahead and switch to the picture there. Again, looks actually similar to green. So when you go on the two sites, you look at them, but every time I come in front of you, I remind us, reminded that it is a big building. And so even though green and the junior high look very similar in regards to the progress that they're making, we still have significant amount of work to do at the junior high due to the sheer size of the building. But again, if we want to move through, you can see that the, the metal frame walls are going up. These are pictures of somewhat of, kind of you can see on the left there, the courtyard. We actually have some more pictures outside of this. If you want to go on to our Twitter page and @BizOps, we took some more pictures of the gym, the auxiliary gym and places like that from the interior. That gives you kind of that perspective. That picture on the right though, I just want to call out. So that's. So that's, that's our area. That would be the cafeteria, administrative suite, and then the arts, your music. So as you can tell, that still hasn't even gotten the steel in there yet. So that's where we have those conversations of, there's still a long way to go with this project. But again, great progress is being made. Here's some aerial photos. What's really cool is if you travel 71 South and you start to head on 126, they're going to start tearing down all that scaffolding because the brick is complete and they've cleaned it. So it's going to start looking like a real, quote unquote, real building as you start to turn that corner. And so that's really impressive. And again, if you take a look online, there was a really cool picture from in the cafeteria, looking out those windows. I say it's the best view of construction in the district. The kids get to see this building rise every day from the junior high. But you can kind of start seeing that because the brick's coming up and it's looking more complete. So it's a lot of excitement over there. And then the other thing I would mention on that junior high property as well, which we'll talk briefly about here in a little bit, is that you'll see that the transportation building is starting to come down. And when the transportation building comes down, we can expand the footprint in that direction. And that's where the work of the theater will be going. Okay. Moving on to the high school. All right. So I feel, I feel like every time I talk about the high school and I show you pictures, they look pretty much the same. So I'll show you the next pictures and that's because the academic areas that we continue to renovate are very similar in scale or in scope. And so we opened up J recently, nearing construction in J and getting that ready for opening. But again, I just want to emphasize to you that as we head into March, this some between March and September, nearly 50% of the high school projects will be under construction. This is a major, major time for the high school. And I know that I have come up here and I've talked to you before about how much grace we've been given by those high school teachers and administrators. And they have been phenomenal to work with as there's banging and things going on in the building and rooms are being shifted mid-course, things like that. It's all part of the plan. But as we start to go into this summer, there's a significant amount of work happening on that campus. And so like any type of major project that we do or more than one major project, it takes an extreme amount of coordination. And so I just want to say now, just a shout out to our team, the high school team and everybody involved. This is no little project. This is massive. And you know, it was actually struck me today. I was having a conversation with Ms. Weber and Mr. Lewis. We were talking about a bunch of different projects and things happening. And we literally took a step back and had to pause because until you start to articulate everything happening in the district at one time, like I don't think you realize it because we live in it every day. There's all these things happening. And so it's really, really exciting, but it is somewhat at some points just overwhelming of going, wow, like all that's going. But I give a shout out to our general contractors, our architectural firms, all of our support people, our maintenance, custodial, everybody, because they're the ones that make this work. And so I say that because as I show these pictures of the high school, I kind of feel repetitive, right? Like they look the same. There's so much stuff happening at the high school behind the scenes that I just want to make sure we're giving credit where credit's due with that project as well. Okay. All right. So what we want to do now is while we're on the high school, we want to talk a little bit about some parking updates. And so I'm actually going to give my mic back over to Mr. Lewis and Ms. Weber. They're going to kind of approach this one and I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Okay. Yep. Let's just go ahead and move to, is there another slide or are we just, okay, I was going to make sure. So. So you can, you know, I think you have all, you know, we tried to preload you with this information because there's a lot to take in all at one time. When you look at the impact to the entire high school campus because of, you know, the things that we're doing, the relocations, the design, the changes in our spaces. You know, we're losing some significant student parking spaces because of that redesign. And I think it totally appropriate redesign of the front entrance of our high school, which is, you know, currently 140 or 84 spaces that we would lose. Relocating our bus arrival to the back of the building. And you know, we have to figure out not only losing that space. You know, we are getting an increase of parking spaces because of that relocation of that bus arrival. But you know, some of the senior lot spaces to accommodate the new site circulation, to be able to move the parent traffic on and off the site. And realistically, what was approved by the city of Montgomery, this was, this was a really big talking point for the residents and for the approval was the positive impact that we're trying to have on the traffic flow of Cornell Road. So you know, the alterations that we have made, not only a turn lane onto the property sooner, being able to snake cars through the parking lot and through the property a little easier and on the property versus being on Cornell Road are positive impacts for the entire campus. Next slide, please. And so you can see the overall design and the overall function of the parking lot. So you can see with the expanded student parking of a plus 226 that would serve our, our entire high school campus for the school day, but also for events and athletics and craft shows and things of that nature. If you've ever been there for a large event, which many of you have, you know that, you know, the parking gets very cramped very quickly with a significant event. The plus 20 on the front is, you know, essentially losing the bus lane and increasing the number of handicap spaces that are available at the front of the building in that, that new lane that will be available. But removing the bus, you know, obviously removing the bus lane and moving it, we have to have a place to put our buses. And obviously that removes a number of parking spaces from the corner of the property. And then we get a little bit that we can add back in at that plus 16 that you see kind of on the, the far west of the property. So you can see the total number, you know, over at the right, you know, kind of the net, we would be looking at total parking add of plus 78 for the entire campus. So that's the impact to the entire high school. That is a huge bonus for the high school. We do not currently have enough parking as it is for the students at the high school. So a plus 78 is a huge benefit to the high school. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry. That was up for parking. So we don't need to talk about transportation yet. So if you, so overall, when you look at this plan, you know, there, we have to, and this is probably one of the most critical pieces to be able to move forward with our projects, the remainder of our projects, not only impacting the high school, but all the exterior changes that we're making. So you know, we, we really need to have a discussion as a team about how are we going to accomplish this task? Because as part of our overall budget, you know, there's a shortfall here of about 1.2 million to be able to fund this, this additional parking that, that is a requirement of the city of Montgomery to be able to move forward with all of our other exterior situations. And they are allowing us as a shortfall, which was approved last night, the number of required parking spaces. We are actually 22 parking spaces short of what is required by the city of Montgomery. And they granted the variance to be able to not put in the additional 22 parking spaces. Because when we originally looked at this parking for the overall campus, they were going to ask us to have an additional hundred plus parking spaces based on some of the renovations, bringing it up to current code, bringing it up to current code for the entire facility. But with the reduction of the size of the exterior athletic stadium, we were able to get that number down to 22 that we were at a shortfall. And I think it was roughly around 140 prior to that. So it was a significant change that, that helped us gain that approval last night. But this, this parking lot is part of, you know, a required component. The only other required component that they gave us last night, which I don't think is necessarily a bad requirement is, and you can see in the very corner, the east corner of the property, that, that is Valley Stream that cuts across there where we're essentially putting in a new curb cut to be able to get traffic onto the property quicker. That new curb cut in that nude lane is to help us with site circulation. The city of Montgomery believed that it was, it would be appropriate for us to put in a sidewalk that connects from Valley Stream, basically that new curb cut to get on our side of the property for people that might walk onto the property. So there will be connecting sidewalk leading not only to the athletic facility, exterior athletics, but back towards the school as well, so that people can safely cross from Valley Stream to be able to get onto the school property. So that was another requirement that they gave us. So you know, the total cost of that additional parking that is required for our, our program is 1.2 million dollars. The reason that I bring this up is that I think it's incredibly important. I don't want this to just be looked at as athletics parking because it is not just athletics parking. It will be used throughout the school day. It's going to be used for site circulation. And my recommendation to the school board would be, you know, back in March of 2020, we made some decisions as a team prior to the pandemic and prior to some of the cost escalations that we've experienced to remove 2.5 million dollars from the bond issue to be able to pay for some of the roofing for the high school and Sims Elementary. That certainly was an appropriate decision. I think we all, as a team, we discussed it and we felt strongly that as we looked at the program, we felt that that would be a need and we felt, hey, we might be able to save some money throughout the project to be able to offset that cost. My, my request for consideration by the board is that we restore, you know, 1.2 million dollars because as we discussed in March of 2020, our roof projects have always been scheduled to come out of our capital improvement funds. And, and that is still, and you know, we still intend to continue on with some of those projects that we have to do to keep our district in good shape as we work through this bond issue. But with the additional cost escalations, the supply chain issues with some of the cost increases, you know, I think it would be appropriate and I think our community would understand that roofing that we plan to come out of the capital improvement funds that we restore that, but also utilize some of the bond issue funds from the roofing projects to cover the cost of this new additional parking lot that is required for us to meet code. So Mrs. Weber, did I miss anything or any additions that you'd like to add before we certainly have that discussion?
Just, just a couple of things. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I think that was a good summary of the thought process that we had back in, in March of 2020. Again, I, I think that we looked at the roof replacement as a capital cost. And I think that at the time, the possibility of that potentially being able to come out of the bond issue budget before the pandemic, before we re-looked at some of the additions that we made to the overall projects district wide to make sure that we had what I think was a more appropriate amount of classroom space to accommodate potential enrollment growth. I think it was, it was an idea at the time, but we've had some things that have happened since that I think would lead us to, to put the dollars back into the bond issue budget to deal with, with this scope that had not been included prior. I think as we continue to go through the process of looking at the needs for not just the, the stadium project, but for the high school campus in general, I think there was a focus on where those parking spaces were going to be located. And we, we did not anticipate or think through the operational impact of putting the bus, moving the bus turnaround, the bus drop off over to the west side of the campus and the overall impact on, on parking for our students. I think we need to think about if we, if we don't make these changes or be able to fund them through our bond issue. It's highly unlikely that we're going to be able to do enough private funding to be able to get those easily. We need to be able to move forward. When I think about the funds that were allocated for the bond issue, or for the roof replacement project, they are very close to being equal to what we are anticipating we're going to be able to earn from investment revenue on the construction funds, on the bond issue funds themselves. So they are funds that really should be devoted to capital improvements. And I think that this, as you look at the focus and the need for this on, on this campus overall, it's, it's the best use at this point in time. When we, going back and thinking about March of 2020, I think we took, we kind of talked about it in two approaches. I think we, we discussed whether it might be best to keep track of those capital improvements that we might be able to utilize bond issue funds for and reimburse the general fund at that point in time, or to just go ahead and pay for those things upfront. And I think what we're finding now is that we probably should have done, done the former approach rather than the latter. But I don't think that any of us could have anticipated what was going to happen with the pandemic and the overall cost of the project. I think Mr. Level did say, you know, I think, given everything that we have encountered in getting this project, all of these projects across the district to fruition and being able to keep things on track, on, on budget to this extent, given the pandemic and all of the challenges that we're seeing in the world economy. To me, it makes sense that if this is one of those things that we need to do to be able to utilize the bond issue money as well as the investment earnings to be able to accommodate what is going to be, I think, an operational improvement to the overall campus. I know many of you looking at you, you've, you've encountered parking issues at the high school with drop off for your students. I know a few of you are looking at having your kids needing parking spots soon. Our enrollment is going to be growing at the high school and it's going to be even fewer students that are going to be able to park on the campus if we don't look at that additional parking. So I don't know, Mr. Lewis, was there anything else that, that you think that we missed on, on this issue? At this point in time, just given the overall scope of the project, I don't see any other contingency funds that I would feel comfortable releasing for this, for this piece of the project. I know we've talked about some soft cost contingency that we have reallocated to a district fund to be able to use anywhere throughout the district. I know that you all have heard that our green property or green project is likely to need some of those contingency dollars to bring that to the finish line. That's primarily because of the initial poor soil issue at, at Green. You know, I, the high school, while it's on, on track, you know, there's still a long way to go with 50% of probably some of the most heavy duty renovations to move, that have to still be completed there. Anything else, Mr. Lewis?
Can I, can I ask a couple of questions, Mrs. Weber and Mr. Level? Can the 184, the parking, what is going there without parking going away?
The 184?
Yeah, what's going there?
That's the, that'll be the bus, where the bus, new bus drop off is for the high school. And during, now during events or when we're not parking buses there for the school day, it would be utilized as additional parking.
So understanding that it's, that the flow of the traffic on the site is, is improving and that that maybe isn't something that we would have, I mean, we knew that we were going to have to do something like that. I'm wondering what impact SHP thought that it would have on the parking spaces and getting rid of it. Because while, you know, in a project of this size, 1.2 million is not that significant, but it's kind of a it's kind of a surprise to me. And I just, I'm trying to kind of wrap my head around, we're improving the traffic flow. We've moved the buses. We're now putting the majority of the parking down on the right side by the sports complex, for lack of a better word. I mean, do we think that this is going to be enough parking? I, I mean, I don't want to get in a situation where in two or three years, we're like, you know what? We need another hundred. And where would we even put it?
Well, and what, what we, and I'm glad you said it in that way. So we, you know, we're under a conditional approval that we have to review with City of Montgomery in another year after a year of operation that they could mandate us to add additional parking. I, I think based on the numbers that we have for our student population, I think based on the number of, you know, large events and visitors that we have to the facility. You know, I think with all, and this isn't, you know, I want to say this isn't Brad Level or Chad Lewis doing traffic counts or studies. This has been looked at by numerous traffic engineers. They've done studies. They've done car counts. They've done, and we talked about all this last night. So that's why I'm such an expert at it at this moment. But they did feel that what we have allotted is appropriate to not have a need for additional parking. But, you know, the city could come back and say, you need to add those 22 spaces or you know, you need to address parking issues. But you know, our conditional approval was based on all of the factors, all the research that has been done going into this. Mrs. Weiss, I, I, you know, I want to acknowledge what you just said about it comes as a surprise because you know, I, I would say that Mr. Level and Mrs. Weber and I were not pleased with, you know, where we're at and, you know, we, we've had some tough conversations with our team that these are not the kind of, the, I, I like surprises as much as anybody, but not these kind. So I, I think your, your point is well taken. It, it was a they should have recognized the, the, the change and how it was going to impact us and I, I don't have an excuse and I don't have any answers other than, you know, we've, we've addressed it with our team that we're not really happy with having to come back and talk about this.
And is the 1.2 basically just to do the park, like the?
It's to build the parking lot.
To build a parking lot?
And site, site clearing, site circulation.
And the access road, right?
Yeah, yep.
And can, on the slide, Mr. Fritz, on the slide before this, where you talked about the long-term impact and the short-term impact or immediate impact, sorry. What is, what is the timeframe on those things? So are we talking about next year's class not having parking? What is the time when you're saying the immediate impact versus the long-term impact?
No, that's a very good question. With this, if, if we're able to move forward with, you know, the reallocation and approving the additional funding, this will get put in for next school year, I believe. But by the beginning of next school year, this, this parking is in play. Because we will have to make these adjustments this summer with the relocation of the buses, the change to the front of the building. That is all planned for this summer.
Right. That was actually the same question I had, Mrs. Weiss. Thanks for asking, but I'm going to ask it maybe slightly differently. The minus 184, will it happen before or after the plus 225?
I'm going to say simultaneously would be.
We're going to lose the 180, the 184 at the end of the school year as they start to take, start to create the new entrance.
So this year's senior class will keep their parking until the end of the year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes.
And then, and when we start the next school year, the new senior class and the new junior class will have new parking areas available to them.
Correct. If we move forward and we allocate the 1.2 million for those additional parking spaces, it'll happen simultaneously and we'll be able to start the new school year with the correct number of parking spots or increase plus 78.
Perfect. Thank you.
If I can just ask a question about, I know that on our weekly update that we get from the high school, it says parking is sold out. Do we have any idea right now how many students want parking that can't get parking and will this change accommodate that?
We, I requested the parking numbers from the high school the other day. We got those numbers and we started to dig into the numbers to understand better how many current parking passes are issued. I am not, I don't have the numbers based on next year. I requested the numbers based on historic and so I would have to take a look at that and see how that plays out with the plus 78, meaning the 226. Likelihood is that we increase significantly from what they currently have.
Okay, because my next question then is if you're still running out of spaces, what impact that will have on busing? If we have students who have to get to school a different way? Just something to put in the back of your mind, Mr. Level.
I think it'll be busing or we'll have more traffic on Cornell Road because parents will drop them off. Or siblings will drop them off. So you're going to see impacts in a couple of different ways if there's not adequate parking to to accommodate that. And I would guess that no one, probably very few students in the sophomore class as they have gotten their licenses have been able to secure a parking spot this year.
The numbers that came through did not have any sophomore parking passes that had been distributed. It was just junior and senior. I do want to add too, and I think we all know this, but I just want to clarify for the general audience. The total number of parking spaces, when we talk about going to the Montgomery Planning Commission and them giving us the allowance of being down 22 spaces, that number of total parking spaces is based on the occupancy of the stadium. And so what they do is they equate the total number of participants at the stadium with how many parking spaces you need to accommodate that. And that's how we turn, determine the entire campus set of spots needed for a massive event. And so as we talked about allowances and things like that from the city, the other thing they wanted to make sure is that we didn't host multiple events that would go over that total capacity amount of the stadium, which we don't think we ever would. We would be fine in that. But I did want to throw that out there because I think it helps you better understand the total number of spots. And as for S H P, as we started to talk about these spots, I think there was so much in our mind about the total capacity of what the stadium would bring that I think there was almost a loss of understanding of if the buses are here, there's aren't valuable spaces during the day. I don't want to make excuses because to Mr. Lewis's point, it came to just as a shock as it is to you, to us, and we had those hard conversations. But I think we were focused on the total number, which during event, those are parking spaces that would be striped. However, during the day, they would not be because of the buses.
Yeah, I want to add a couple of comments. I, I agree with everything that's been said. Obviously, a million dollars is, is difficult to swallow. You know, I was at the planning commission meeting yesterday and I can attest for everything that was said. You know, our conditional approval to move forward is based on this number of parking space. But you know, I think we need to look at it more from an operational standpoint, from a day-to-day school standpoint. You know, the loss of whatever that number is, 184 spots for our students is a big issue. So I, I don't think this is tied to athletics 100%. I think it's tied to every day, you know, students coming in and into our campus. So I think that's important to note. You know, we knew the board was taking a, a risk of taking out two, two plus million dollars on a roofing project that was never added to the scope of the contract or the scope of, you know, the number that when, when we came up with the 127 and a half million dollars for the bond levy, you know, roof replacement was, was never part of that. And again, as Mrs. Weber said, a lot changed over the course of the two years. So we knew we were taking a risk by taking the money out of the, the bond fund and using it for capital improvements. I'm sorry, vice versa. So, you know, I'm in support of this. I think a million dollars is, is a big number. I, I have, I share all the same concerns that everybody else does. I would like to understand a little bit more, Mrs. Weber, where that million dollars comes from. You know, is it coming out of capital improvements for the next school year because we do have a budget for that? Or is this above and beyond our capital improvement budget that we have for next school year?
Thank you, Mr. Ballot. Currently, we do not have, our, our capital improvement dollars are basically funded out of our general fund. So that would be basic, would be considered a transfer that would probably be immediate to be able to make sure that this, this work could go forward. Right now, our cash balance is well beyond what the parameters of, of this, our financial parameters require. And I don't see that this change would have any impact moving forward on anything like asking for a levy sooner than, than when we typically would. You know, back when, back in 2020, when we were looking at this, we would have utilized these funds out of the general fund at that time. We just made the decision back then to utilize the bond issue instead. So again, I would see this as being something that would be, we would want you to authorize it now. But kind of, but much like when we initially had this conversation back in 2020, if we would find that those dollars were still available at the end of, of the project as a whole across the district and there were dollars available left in our bond, in our construction funds, they could either, they could really be used for those capital improvement projects going forward at that time, which would be a relief to the general fund at that time. So, you know, it, it's going to be, depend on how we finish out all of the projects overall. I think the, the issue is that the dollars are needed now to be able to move forward and make sure that that parking is available for the upcoming school year and to support the approval of, of the Montgomery Planning Commission to move forward on, on the project as a whole. So again, you, you know, your, my, my commitment to you would be that we would continue to bring these discussions up to, up to the board. You know, there'd still be, based on moving that 1.2 million, 1.2 million that would have gone to those bond renovation projects that had not initially been planned. And, and if there are contingency dollars at the end, that would be left overall. Again, those could be used to fund other capital improvement needs moving forward.
And Mrs. Weber, if I might add to that commitment, when we had that discussion in March 2020, I believe, you know, part of the discussion was about, you know, not spending money to just add things because we have money that is available. And I think Mrs. Weber and Mr. Level and myself would make that commitment that we're not going to agree to add things, knowing that this was a, you know, certainly this discussion was a 1.2 million dollar addition that we needed to handle, but that we would still make that commitment if the funds were there at the end and, and there are no additional critical items that needed to be added. We would not be looking to just utilize the funds because I think that was the concern in March of 2020 was that if the money's available, you're going to spend it on X, Y, or Z. And I, I, I think we have a global perspective of the capital improvements plus the things that you want us to keep an eye on for these projects that we would make that commitment that we're not just going to go out and spend it on additional items because the money's available. We'll keep this in mind as a, you know, cost of doing business that if we can recruit as we move forward at the end, we would like to do that. But it certainly is something that will help us move forward now to be able to accomplish the next milestone of this project.
Yeah, my, my last comment and, you know, the other thing from our meeting last night was, you know, it wasn't just centered around parking. It was overall traffic flow, getting cars off of Cornell Road and into our property to relieve the congestion for our community. And, you know, adding that drive coming off in the third entranceway is certainly part of this 1.1 million dollars. And that's a huge part of, you know, the project that we presented to Montgomery as well as, is flow of traffic improvement.
I have a couple, I have a question and a comment. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned because it feels like we're taking, we're focusing on, we're taking away from what we do day-to-day, which is what goes on at the high school, students going to school every day and shifting that to parking for the athletics. And you say here that you're going to have, you're going to increase parking spots that are making things more accessible for people with disabilities and for visitors. But that's parking for the, not for the time when kids are in school. So you're shifting the priority from the day so that when people come in the evening, they have better, you know, accessibility for parking and for visitors. And that that just, that kind of.
I don't think that's how the, the plan will work and it's, those new handicapped spots will be right by the main entrance, which right now is where the buses drop off.
Kids, yeah. People who need accessible buses and who need places.
So once the plan is complete, that, that area that's right by the main entrance, that is where the handicap.
So where will, how will students, okay, so you're saying that they'll walk over to the senior parking. So all these kids will go from?
No, they're right. It's literally.
How will they get to the buses, I guess? Yeah, where will the buses go?
So the cur- the current bus.
Could we go to the other slide, Mr. Fritz? I think that would help.
So the kids have to leave, well, how will they get to where they're going to go?
So, right here will be our bus entrance. Okay, so they'll come up Cornell, they'll come in here, they'll circle the students who are going here. This is when it's complete. The staff parking will all be in here. The staff will enter the same entrance as the buses. Our handicap, special needs buses will come into the loop up here near the front entrance.
The kids just go on regular buses? We don't have handicap buses, do we?
We do. We have some special needs buses for wheel.
But most of the kids that have disabilities also just ride the regular bus.
Right. And they'll be here, it'll be a direct entrance into the building here. Over here, there are two entrances. Those coming from Blue Ash that are coming from West on Cornell will come in here. There'll be a loop right here. So we'll be continuous loop in and out for drop off. Those that are coming from our Sims, Sycamore Township, possibly over here in the Montgomery, will be coming from this direction. Then we'll come in our new entrance and circle around here. So to the point that Montgomery was hoping for is that as we do this, it relieves the traffic off of Cornell. And it gives us the point where we have multiple entrances for our students to arrive and to dismiss. So we have designated spots. Does that help?
And those handicapped spots are going to be in the, near the new front entrance to the school.
Oh, yeah, this plus 20 and those areas in there are going to be all the new handicap slots, which actually put them closer to the front entrance of the building.
For when they're there for athletics or for when they're for school?
For school. This is all school.
I, I didn't, I, I guess this is really, this is new to me too, obviously, as a new board member, but also just the information is new. So I just want to, I really want to just feel comfortable about what this is because it.
Yeah, absolutely. These are the questions. And so the current parking exists here, here and here. And so what we're doing is by shifting this, we add 16 spots here and we're adding 20 spots here to free up some of our current spots. When we talk about athletics in the program, it's the 226 right here. When the stadium was shifted, which originally was up here to down here, it is actually a really smart move because what we want to do is shift the conversation from athletic parking to this idea of campus parking to increase the total number of students during the day to have access to parking spots. Right now, we limit those numbers by increasing the 226 because we shifted it up because for those on the board previously, you knew the parking was more down here, it wouldn't be able to use as campus parking. This allows for campus parking to be attached to increase the total number of spots during the day. And I think that's where we wanted to be is to increase the daily number of spots.
Sure. I, I understand that. It just, that still is a pretty far away, away from the, from the building, right? It's more like you're over in the athletic, you're kind of over in the athletic fields and then you're walking over to the school. Versus now, they're pretty close to the building over in the 184 part. So that's what I mean. It just feels like we're shifting everything over to the athletics in order to satisfy that need. But it's taking away from the needs of our day-to-day, which is our school. And that's what concerns me.
Yeah.
I actually, I actually would disagree. I think it's adding parking spots to our academic portion. And I think that's what, that's what we need to focus on here.
And then the buses, the other question I had was, so I assume that the transportation has, they have vetted this and they're, they can turn around in that section where there's 184 and they, and a lot of kids can get out. There's an area for a lot of kids and a lot of buses. Just like, because it's so much bigger with that, I mean, where the current situation happens, right? It's so much bigger. The buses come up, we're in the big circle and then they come down and they have all this space. People are coming out of that athletic entrance where there's ramps and where it's easy and accessible for people to get in and out. But now they're going to be leaving from one side of the building, all of them. And then the buses are going to turn around in a much smaller, much smaller area. From one side of the building, all of them. And then the buses are going to turn around in a much smaller, much smaller area.
Yes. And this is what. With all the other development that would have a site developed in regards to traffic flow. They work with our transportation department. We've also worked with ease and access into the building, which would be part of that construction process. And so all of that has been vetted and stoked and developed through our civil engineers. So the buses will all fit there, which is how we ended up determining that we need to move some of those handicap buses over here, the ones that service. Some of our students that might need wheelchairs or whatever it may be to be parking here in the front circle, which is actually closer access to the. What we do now, the back entrance to the school would be considered front entrance now.
Quick question. We're from, but the 226 over to the current parking spot. How many crosswalks are going to be over that drive? Just in how well lit are they going to be blinking? So if you have a group of students that. Are probably going to be wearing dark colors, you know, at seven in the morning when it's dark out. How are we going to get them safely across when they park and they're still in a daze?
Our entire facility will be well lit LED lighting. It's been upgraded. Through energy conservation projects, but I can assure you as a board, our team has thought through the logistics of parking. We've had all the appropriate people involved and we have had our engineers, you know, really look at this and vet this that, you know. And I, I can assure you that between our high school team and our operations team. You know, we will be able to handle the logistics of the change, the positive change of traffic flow onto the entire property.
I'm just more worried about the high school students who are clueless in the morning.
Yeah, I, I, I think they'll be well tended to.
Okay, I have a few.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I have a few, if you, if you guys are. Ready, I, I have a few extra thoughts, maybe. I, I was one of those and I want to go back to March 2020. I think we absolutely made the right decision to execute the roof work in March 2020. Regardless of the pocket that, of, of where the money came from. It was. Absolutely the right thing to do the roof work before we did building construction. And so I, 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 I don't look back at that and say that was a wrong decision at all. I think it was the right, absolutely right decision. Whether it was marked as capital or as part of the bond fund is not as material to me. I, I think it was the right thing to do. When I look at this decision, I also think it's the right thing to do. We, we need for our campus. To have enough parking spots for our students that want to drive instead of take the bus to go to school. I don't, my, my core question on should this be funded from the, the bond or the capital or the. Or the. The tax, the tax money is ultimately, is, or the, the always an aviator campaign, is this a. Is this a, a change request that's linked to athletics or a change request that's linked to. The execution of our daily parking at the, the, the school. I look at this as a need for the school to operate. And to that, to that regard, I look at this 1.2 million like a 1.2 million dollar change request for the project. In that regard, to get the approval for the Montgomery, for Montgomery, to me, this is a no brainer to support. I think what we're arguing about maybe of is it's counted as capital or counted as the bond campaign is. Are we going to say we're above, you know, above budget or below budget in the, in the net for the overall project? I believe that to you, Mrs. Weber, to, to make that conclusion on how to best execute that. I, I believe we do need to go forward with this as a change request. I would support it. I think it's, I think it's fundamentally needed for our high school to operate.
I would, I would agree with Mr. Comerford.
I have one other question, a follow up question, just in, in light of the fact that we. Did not anticipate this. Have we actually gone back and looked at the plans for Green? And the junior high and the traffic flow for those and how many parking spots we are either losing or gaining? And is that going to be enough? Because I really don't want to see something for those two schools with a 1.2 million dollar price tag on it. What do we, have we talked to SHP about the design?
You can't see, but I'm smiling under my mask. I, right? I can, I can see in my eyes. The same questions I asked, you know, the same surprises that you had, the same questions we asked. The fundamental difference I think with junior high in the green is they're very predictable. Number of spaces and patterns because it's staff and buses. We don't have student drivers at those spaces, which. Create, and a lot of activities. The junior high, yes, because the field's there. And so to your point, those conversations are happening. So we go back. And make sure that we are on point with the total number of spaces. I, I will tell you, green is a little bit easier, junior high a little more complicated. It has become way less complicated now that we've moved transportation off that site. And so we, I think we have talked parking at junior high way more than we've ever, maybe we should have talked it more at the high school. I don't know, but.
Uh, thank you very much. So in terms of, are we voting on something this evening or is it just? Mrs. Weber, what's the protocol for that?
I don't think that we need a, a vote at, at this point in time. Giving us the head nod allows us to move forward with the, I believe it's the early site package on the high school. Campus that will just allow us. So we'll, we'll bring back actually the way we can, what we would do that would be. Approval of the contract to have that move forward. And with that. We would authorize the funding source. So as long as you give us the, the head nod to move forward, we'll bring that back. I would hope at our February morning meeting, at least the authorization to move forward with that, including any kind of design approval that we would need to go with that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure. I understand. Sorry. So are you saying we don't need to vote today? We don't need to vote today. I just feel like I need more information. I don't feel comfortable with the information that I have just yet. I just need to know more. It's not the. Not saying one way or the other, but I feel like I need more information.
Here I think is the thing that you always need to consider. You can always vote. That's always fine, you know, and it. But it's not necessary at this point because really what your, your role would be. To approve the authorization for the contracted work. So approval of the contract, approval of design, things like that. But just giving us the head nod to move forward. The authorization would actually occur alongside those additional approvals. So it's not necessary, if it makes you more comfortable. To, to take a vote to authorize the transfer of 1.2 million dollars to cover parking, you can do that. I, as the person who have to worry about processing all of those things, don't feel that it's necessary at this point in time.
Thank you.
So I think we'll leave it to Mrs. Weber's discretion and not take a vote on it.
I would, it's fine with me to not take a vote on it this evening, but I'd feel more comfortable us being able to bring the whole package of what. That parking plan is going to, going to look like in the design and the authorizations to move forward with the contract. So on and so forth next, so.
Maybe, maybe one last question I have. When we say we're on time and under budget. How much are we under budget? Are we under budget by more than 1.2 million dollars?
We actually have an MFP review on Thursday. Is that tomorrow? Tomorrow and court, you know, when you're, these days are all. And we actually have a review of that. And like Mrs. Weber said, and she can speak more to this, you know, green, obviously we need to keep an eye on. But overall, we need to sit down and we need to continue to have those conversations, which is why we have our court team meetings, which is tomorrow. Ms. Weber, you want to, you can add to that if you'd like.
I think that one of the things that we need to keep in mind is that, and we're going to talk about this a little bit in the financial update. Is there are still some areas within the high school that we're going to be approving the final GMP. For those projects and they're primarily our indoor athletic space. So once that's approved, and I think that's going to be February or March.
Correct.
That'll give us a better idea of where we are with contingency for that building. Right now I think the contingency is looking good. So there might be an opportunity to, to shift some of those dollars back into capital improvements at the end, but I think that's going to be probably the next key. Key step in this process, so.
And I, I say that fully recognizing the action we took last March reduced the contingency that we had at our disposal. So I, I. I'm fully okay with moving forward with the parking as, as has been proposed. Because of that action we took, this, this falls into the category to me of things that would be required. This isn't a. This isn't a nice to have. This is, I think, a must have. We need parking for our students.
I agree.
Agreed.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
I think we're still on the MFP. We're still in the overview, so.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not going to talk about this. Here's a beautiful picture of our temporary bus compound. Well, we don't have any more news on transportation other than it's off the site. The transportation building is coming down. We're over on our temporary location. Things are looking good. It's a pretty cool shot right there of all the buses in one space. And if you remember the old. Area, they were all kind of everywhere. So I'm sure our friends in Montgomery over there that don't have buses in their backyard anymore are super appreciative as well. All right.
And I would have said, I don't think we've had any issues with making sure that our routing. Has really still flowed, flowed very smoothly and, and you don't really think about just moving. That facility a couple of miles, but it really does change the way the routes are run every day and they've done a great job with that.
It does. And the benefit that we have of this location, it is, is pretty much centrally located in the district. So over a long run, there will be operational savings in general. But I know I say this with every project. Shout out to our team. David Foster, who has run point on just making sure that project. Has happened, Mr. Fritz and all that are involved in making sure that thing goes forward. So it's been incredible. All right. So Sycamore High School Athletics Update, I'm actually going to, again, I get to pass this one. So I'm going to pass this to Mrs. Weber.
Okay. I believe that Mr. Lovell already noted that the Montgomery Planning Commission has provided approval for us to move forward with the site plan and, and. The process for proceeding with the athletic facility. What I wanted to do is just give you an update on our Always an Aviator campaign. Progress. Since we had a launch, the new, the newest. Opportunities and back in November. We are depending, one of the things is pending the approval of the contract later with Ad Power, which provides the funding for the scoreboard. We're at a little over a half a million dollars in contributions or. Pledges for the Always an Aviator campaign. Of that, about 40,000 is dedicated to the natorium. So that would not be for the, the stadium process, but. We've made some, some great progress from some very generous donors since we started this, this current leg of the. Of the campaign. I know Mr. Harden is, is dedicated to doing a lot more work on, on this process. He's really kind of launched into more of the naming rights piece of the campaign, trying to find some. Potential corporate sponsors to do some of the bigger name, to take advantage of some of the bigger naming rights opportunities within the progress. So. Good, good start to this next opportunity, but we still have a ways to go to get. The primarily the field houses, pieces of this project to move forward. I don't know if I missed anything, Mr. Lewis or Mr. Lovell on that.
I think for the essence of time, we'll move on.
We always have, have February to pull together the next, all the next phases of, of the high school process.
Are we done with master facility planning now? Somebody was happy. Okay. Moving on with the agenda, I need a motion for the change order of.
Affordable language services.
So moved.
Second.
This is just, uh, this is a, a company that we've done business with. They do translation and interpretation services for us. Things such as taking information that we need to get to parents, translating it into various languages. Participating in meetings directed by district staff. This is someone that our EL staff has worked with and there are very few organizations left that provide this service. So. They are a local team that provides this service to us and so.
And we're bringing it back to you because there is a, it reflects a cost increase. Which is probably not unusual given the, the scarcity of the resource. As well as just overall inflation within the marketplace.
I just had one question about it. They do, so they do written translations in, and then they do interpreting. Do they ever do healthcare related interpreting and translation? And the reason I ask is because I just want to know if they're, if they are also in compliance with HIPAA. I don't see that in the contract, so that's why I'm asking.
It's listed, I think it was listed in the contract, Mrs. Spencer, right? I think it said healthcare. Oh.
If that's something that we need within the contract, I think what we could do is potentially amend. The resolution to approve that, providing authority to, I get to me to work with the contractor to address that. Within the contract itself.
Can, Mrs. Bitter, can you clarify the issue again?
My question is if we use their services for healthcare related services for the district. Cause that's how it's listed on the front page of their contract. And then the question follow up was, is there, are they HIPAA compliant? Just a checking on that. I'm assuming that they would be, but I don't see it in the contract. Which leads me to my next question is, did somebody review the contract from our legal counsel?
The individual that gives us these contracts is not present, so. If it's going to create an issue, we can move to amend the agenda and remove the item for further consideration because. I don't have that information in front of me. I don't have that answer for you. I, I will say as someone that used to review contracts, we do not have legal counsel review every single contract that we have. every single contract that we have, um, just from a cost standpoint, from our legal bills, uh, that we would pay due to that fact. So.
Sure. Well, for this one, I think it's, I think it's just reasonable to, to maybe have Beth talk with them about that. I'm not saying we shouldn't move forward because we need the service, obviously. All I'm saying is it might be something wise that we do look at that as a district when we enter into contracts with healthcare professionals or people who are working in that space with our students.
Okay. Um, so, so the, uh, resolution would be amended to authorize the treasurer to, um, amend the contract to address the provision of medical translation.
Well, just under the confidentiality section, just making sure that if there's a HIPAA related instance, that they are keeping that student information compliant under HIPAA.
Okay.
In all state regulations and federal regulations.
But we need a motion for the amendment. Is that correct, Mrs. Weber?
Or we could just have Mrs. Weiss and Mr. Commerford agree to the amendment to the resolution since Mrs. Weiss made the motion and Mr. Commerford seconded it.
Can you repeat the amendment, please?
Sorry, please.
What was the amendment?
The amendment is to authorize the treasurer to amend the contract to address HIPAA confidentiality.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, as well.
Just a clarifying point, is that to be added to section five under confidential information? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Have we used this company in the past?
We have. This has been one of our go-to, uh, translation service provider for quite some time. So, um, and I think that Mrs. Bitter would probably be the biggest reason we didn't go back through a complete contract review is because we've worked with them in the past.
Sure. I'm just at, I'm just adding it.
But thank you for pointing out the, the concern you had because it is a concern for, uh, could be a concern for our families who want to make sure we're covered.
There's no additional comments. Mrs. Weber, please call a roll.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Commerford.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
And Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
Motion passes with the amendment. I need a motion for the approval of the job description for Director of Technology.
So moved. Second.
I want to make sure I captured who, who made the motion, Mrs. Bitter.
Mrs. Weiss.
Oh, Mrs. Weiss. Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right.
Question about that as well.
One second.
All right. What?
I was waiting for Mr. Lewis. We're on the, um, Director of Technology. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, appreciate that. Um, just also, just for the essence of time, a couple of quick comments. So, um, you know, we've talked about the need, uh, to have some transition time. Mr. Fritz is going to be a, a, a difficult act to follow. And we know that we're going to need time, uh, in transition. And, and really this is Mr. Fritz's, um, you know, just being the team player that he is, talking with us about the need to have some transition time for a new Director of Technology. And the job description had not been revised since I think two thousand and five, uh, two thousand and one. So it was even earlier. So, um, but it, it was time to look at the job description. And Mr. Fritz is very tied in with the Ohio Cosin Group, um, and, and has been a leader in that group. So he made the job description more reflective of what a, uh, Chief Technology Officer should be, um, going forward and made sure that the job description is reflective of that. And, and certainly he worked collaboratively with, uh, Mrs. Tompkins and Mrs. Wagner to make sure, and Mrs. Weber to make sure that it reflected, uh, the future of what we would like to see in a Director of Technology. During that time of transition, you know, we would like to ask the board to be able to post this position sooner rather than later upon approval of the new job description so that we can hire someone, uh, to work during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And Mr. Fritz will take a different role during that school year. We will be recommending that he take, uh, an active role in data analytics for the year. Uh, as part of our strategic plan, we've talked about the need for that type of position. And Mr. Fritz being the trustworthy, um, person that he is and, and really advising the district on what does he see the need going forward after living that, you know, for his, uh, remaining year of, of being partnered with the district and being involved with the district that he can really take that lens and look at, okay, what, what can I best recommend going forward for twenty-three, uh, twenty-four and beyond? So, uh, we're not prepared to bring that one forward, but I wanted to give you the full picture that, you know, that's kind of where we're headed. Um, and I think honestly, I think you all have seen, uh, his skill level, uh, in that area and his ability to kind of move about that space. And I think his connection to Learn Twenty-One is the Executive Director of Learn Twenty-One. They're doing a lot of work in that space, uh, with their clients and, and with the team of people that he works with in Learn Twenty-One as well. So, uh, it would seem to be a natural fit, um, especially with, um, Mr. Fritz kind of having the twenty-plus year perspective on what's been going on in technology in our district. We certainly want to make sure that we tap into his institutional knowledge before, uh, he would depart for other, other ventures in his, uh, career if Lee lets him, uh, you know, get away from work too far. So, uh, but that's, that's the, the, the change in the job description is based on, uh, just an update, making sure that we're ready, uh, for that transition.
Can I make a comment or ask a question? I had the pleasure of meeting, uh, Mr. Fritz and having a, um, an onboarding session with him. And I'm very impressed and always have impressed by Mr. Fritz in our district. Um, one of the things that we talked about, um, during our session for onboarding, what the, I, I, we had asked, um, what are the biggest challenges facing our district with technology? And the two that Mr. Fritz brought up, um, were one was, um, data privacy, student data privacy. And the other one is cybersecurity. And I'd like to know if we could potentially add those two, two subjects into the description as well so that the future, um, you know, applicant would have some understanding of those two areas. Cause I know that you do, and I would just like to see whoever we bring in to, you know, oversee our technology would be definitely aware of, of those two areas. And maybe you can speak to that for us.
Yeah. So what I would say to you is that if you look at job descriptions, you see over the years, things changed so rapidly and, you know, they're so dynamic. And so while I did not explicitly call out cybersecurity and student data privacy, it was for that specific reason that in five years or seven years from now, are the, how important will those be? Well, they will be important. Don't get me wrong, but where will they be? So I was trying to be generic enough to say it's about business management. It's about leadership and vision. In, in these three buckets, if you look at the job description and where they align with the national standards, those are embedded underneath there. And then I shared with Mr. Lewis and Mrs. Weber and Mrs. Wagner in a, in a, um, in a conversation around what kind of questions we'll ask the new director. I gave them a series of national interview questions that are boiler template plate questions that you should be asking. And they'd go really deeper dive into those areas. So while I don't disagree with you, I, I looked at the old job descriptions and some of those things were like, well, we kind of really got specific and that got outdated. So I think we can get it, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
No, good. I appreciate it.
Any additional questions? Mrs. Weber, please call a roll.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
Mr. Commerford.
Hi.
Motion passes. Moving on, we'll have the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three preschool update.
So I'm going to ask, uh, Mrs. Belfrom to come up and, uh, Mr. Fritz, if you can advance, I think it might be the next slide. There we go.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time and, um, for an opportunity to talk about our preschool expansion. As part of our master facility, we made a commitment to expand preschool. So next year we will be implementing some of, um, those, um, expansions. Preschool will move from Mapledale to Sims. Um, and at Sims Elementary, we will have four classrooms. Um, and then we will maintain the two current classrooms at Blue Ash Elementary. Currently we have eight sections of preschool, um, and that will be expanded to twelve. So an increase of four additional sections of preschool.
On the same slide as.
This is Fritz's next slide.
Thank you. Um, so part of the expansion, we're looking at our continuum of services. Meaning how are we servicing students? Do we have appropriate classrooms and placements for all of our learners in various learning styles? So to increase our continuum, we are adding, um, additional general education classrooms, um, as well as two sections of specialized classrooms for our students with most intense needs. Um, so that will allow us to have, um, general education, integrated classrooms as well as specialized, having a full continuum of preschool services for our community. Um, and, you know, the impact is just the things I was just highlighting that we are truly explain, expanding that continuum, um, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our learners, um, and also increasing opportunities for our students, um, without disabilities as well with the increase of our gen ed, um, classroom. Are there any questions about that expansion?
All right. I have a question. I always have questions. Uh, how many students are there in the preschool currently? And then how many will there be?
I don't have the current numbers right in front of me. I apologize for that. But we service about eighty students on average, um, but I can get you the exact numbers.
Thank you. Quick question. Um, in terms of teaching faculty for the new preschool classrooms, are the preschool teachers going to have to be special education certified? Are we adding a special education position to go back and forth between the classrooms over there?
So for the two, um, classrooms that we are at, we will maintain our current teachers, um, just in those two spaces. And then for the additional classrooms, um, we will hire, um, a general education preschool teacher, um, as well as, um, a special education preschool teacher for the specialized programming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Belfrom.
All right. Thank you.
I need a motion for the approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three preschool tuition rates.
So moved.
Second.
Just a, a quick update or, um, information on how the, um, the methodology we use to calculate that rate. And just keep in mind that the, the tuition is only charged to our students and, uh, my typical students. It's not charged to our families with, um, students with disabilities. Um, we look at the total cost of those, uh, teachers who are assigned to, um, the, the classrooms that provide that general education, um, option as well as the integrated classrooms and, uh, come up with a cost per student for just those students that are in the typical, that are, uh, typical students. So, um, thirty-two hundred per year includes, uh, four days of, of preschool per week. Currently we do offer the opportunity for transportation to come from, uh, coming, um, along with our students with disabilities for whom we offer transportation. And it includes supplies and, and things like that as well. So I think it's a great deal. It compares well within, um, the cost for preschool within our community.
Mrs. Weber, is it cost neutral?
As we were looking at this with, uh, some of the updates to the additional gen ed sections. And then, um, I think we're looking at maybe sixteen additional, um, typical student opportunities, maybe more depending on, um, how those classrooms fill up. We think that, uh, that thirty-two hundred, um, per year tuition cost will cover the cost for our typical students. It's not meant to cover the cost of our preschool program for our students with disabilities, but we do think it will cover the cost for providing, um, the service for that, for, um, at least for the salary and benefits for those typical kids. It won't cover the transportation costs, um, but we think it will cover the, the staffing costs.
And just to clarify, students with disabilities regardless of, um, family income? That's correct. Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Mrs. Weber, please call a roll.
Mr. Commerford.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Motion passes. Moving on to the treasurer's consent agenda. I need a, uh, motion for the approval of the treasurer's consent agenda.
I apologize. Mr., um.
So, uh, sorry.
I think we have the power.
Actually, Mr. Ballant, number thirteen.
Yeah, I apologize. It's written here and I just didn't read my own writing. I need a motion for the approval with the Power Ad Company.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, just a quick, uh, this, you know, just an update, um, the Power Ad Company. We have worked with them in the past that what they do is they provide, uh, a scoreboard. They sell the advertising to sponsor, paying off the scoreboard. Once they pay off the scoreboard, uh, then there is a joint shared, uh, agreement for the, uh, the funds that come, uh, with the sponsorships for the scoreboard. So, um, again, we have worked with this company before. It is a no-cost contract for the district because they're the ones providing it. They are paying for it and utilizing the, um, ad sponsorships to pay for the scoreboard. Until they're paid off, then we get a, a share of the, uh, the funding that comes from the sponsorships. So it's worked out well in the past to pay for things like score tables, uh, things of that nature.
And so there's, I just have one, one comment that I noticed in there. You know, I think ad approval is very critical so that we have say over, over what ads are going up on our campuses. Um, and I noticed that there is a, a contingency in there that the district is required within thirty days to request this. So I just want to make certain that this is noted and that somebody is responsible within those thirty days to make sure that we do request, um, you know, approval for the ads.
Yes, we will make sure that is completed.
Thank you. Let's, let's discuss how that falls in with our board policy and how we want to assign that task.
I have, I have a few questions. So you, um, you said that you've worked with them in the past, but do you do? Are there other, I mean, have we, did we do a bidding process for that? I, I just want to understand in general, and not just for this, but in general, how we approve contracts. Like, do we have a bidding process? Do we, you know?
If, if there were a cost.
Companies.
If there were a cost to it, um, we would normally have done a bidding process. We have board policy surrounding that, but, uh, with a no-cost contract, um, I don't, I, I personally couldn't speak to how many companies are out there that do this type of work or, um, which ones are good or not good. I have to trust the team of people, you know, that we work with, within our district that, you know, are pursuing these to, you know, vet what they believe is the right contracts to bring to the operations team or to Mrs. Weber or myself, uh, to move it forward. So, you know, having a previous relationship with them that they were able to successfully, uh, take care of the purchase of the, uh, materials, whatever it may be, and pay for it with the ads. That, you know, it's really a win-win for us because it, it does not require any of our staff, um, to exert any effort or fundraising, uh, campaigning to pay for these very tangible assets, very expensive assets. I mean, uh, the scoreboard will probably be a two hundred thousand dollar, um, addition to our facility that won't have to be paid for from, uh, any of our athletic funds or Always an Aviator campaign, which will reduce the cost, um, that we need to fundraise.
Mr. Lewis, it's, it's also noted in the contract that there's a responsibility of Sycamore to participate in the raising or in the, in the obtaining of sponsors. Is that an athletic department?
That, that would be the athletic department. That's correct.
And I think that, that, um, involvement is good because it helps for us to have. And I think that, that involvement is good because it helps for us to have some oversight in making sure. It's time to go home. Thank you. But we have one, you know, one thing, one, we try to have more kind of control over making sure that those, those relationships fall within other guidelines or other advertising or other sponsorship kinds of opportunities we would have within the district. So Mr. Harden is, is well aware of that responsibility. So it would make sense for him to be the person involved with that.
Okay. And then just, I'm not familiar with this. That's why I'm asking questions. But in general, when there is a contract like this where it says that we're, you know, we are responsible, obviously, for the maintenance repair. If something should happen to it, is a 10-year contract, those kinds of things that we have to be in this contract for 10 years with them. Does legal counsel review this?
Yes, legal counsel has reviewed this a number of times from two lenses. One, from a previous contract that we had with a different provider. It was a, it was a contract that was done with the boosters and a private individual that it got reviewed. And it also got reviewed from just making sure that it's an appropriate contract for the district to enter into.
I couldn't hear the last thing you said, sorry.
To make sure it was an appropriate contract for the district to enter into.
Any additional questions from the board?
I have a quick question. Somewhere in that contract, it mentions my, sorry, my computer died. It mentioned that they would have rights over the students' photos somewhere in there, I believe. I don't, Sarah, can you find that real quick? Sorry, my computer died. I'm trying to find it in there. Okay, I can't find it right now. Are we, how are we going to make that a possibility for them? Or not a possibility for parents who opted out of having their kids with photos, et cetera?
Our district policies would override and govern anything that we would provide to them. They would have to get that from us to be able to utilize that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Commerford.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
And Mr. Ballant.
Hi. Motion passes. Mr. Lewis, other?
Mr. Ballant, for the time constraints, I'll pass on other tonight.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the treasurer's consent agenda. I need a motion for the approval of the treasurer's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Weber.
There's nothing of great interest to report on this evening. I will point out, we are accepting a donation from SHP for a scholarship for our high school fund. That was a, something that we received as, that they provided as a from a drawing, I believe, that they held at the Ohio Scoreboard Association Conference.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mr. Commerford.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
And Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
Motion passes. Mrs. Weber, the fiscal year 2022, second quarter update.
Okay, I just wanted to be duly noted that my colleagues really needed to get home because of the ice. I'm hoping, have we heard a weather report out there? Okay. Anyway, Mr. Fritz, could you go on to the next slide? Just a quick update on the second quarter, next slide. Want to give an overview of some of the key happenings in the second quarter. Very quick update on the master facility plan, child nutrition. The CAFER is available and now called the AFCR. And then a few things on what's next coming up in the third quarter. So Mr. Fritz, go on to the next slide. Okay. Key to report is that with the general fund, we are within projection for both revenue and expense, which I think is good news moving forward. Nothing really that has happened that would make us think that we have any key concerns in meeting our financial goals for the year. This pass in the second quarter is when we make our bond payments on our outstanding bond issues, both that are tied to tax revenue for the district as well as our energy conservation notes and notes for the, the district office. In all, we had about seven and a quarter million dollars that were made in bond payments effective December 1, including about 4.9 million that was paid toward principal. So bringing down our overall outstanding debt for the district. I will just add that, if you recall from our, our bond issues that were passed in 2010, we do receive a federal subsidy that was available back in that time period due to the Great Recession of about $550,000 in federal subsidies to help offset our interest payments. The reported at our last board meeting, our tax rates have been set for 2022. They're at 34.78, which is a slight reduction from last year. Our bond issue rate falls within our promise to the community that was made back in 2019. So I think that's all good news. We rank 21st out of 25 school districts in Hamilton County in terms of our residential rates. So we're the fifth lowest for that comparison group. Okay, let's go forward, Mr. Fritz. Okay, on the master facility plan, this might go back a little bit. Mr. Commerford, to your question, right now, 83% of our budget has been obligated or expended. Those dollars that are remaining are primarily for those, those projects that you see listed there. The high school final phase, which is interior athletics primarily. The athletic facilities, our transportation facility, as well as furnishings and equipment. So we'll be bringing back some of those contracts for approval here in the next couple of months. Onto the next slide. Okay, on to child nutrition. This was our area, a big area of concern for us last year because we had fewer students in the buildings eating lunch. And we also had the one quarter where we basically were serving no lunch within the, within the building. So, but what you can see is that the second quarter was a good quarter for the child nutrition department. We have our kids back in the building. We have the opportunity for students to participate in free lunch and they're doing it. And the federal reimbursement rate for those lunches is significant enough to make sure that we are able to cover our costs and then some. We also are seeing that our students who are eating in our cafeteria, they're, they're back to buying some à la carte items. And so overall, doing a great job in our child nutrition department. And I think Mr. Lovell had sent me something that I think the federal reimbursement rates may even go up a little bit more for the remainder of this year. I've not heard yet whether that extension of the free pro, free lunch program is going to extend past the school year. But it's certainly helped us recover from some of the losses that we were seeing over the last 18 months before that. Okay. The AFCR, which it used to be called the CAFER, they now call it the Annual Comprehensive Report. So the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I think it's just to drive me crazy and making sure that it is updated in all the right places within the audit. So it's available right now. We have it available on the district website. It's complete, it's been through the complete process of audit and that's why it's available at this time. We're going to be working on printed copies here very soon for those in our community. He would really like to have 110-page document that they can look at at their leisure. So we'll be getting those out soon. Next slide. And finally, just some things to anticipate in this upcoming third quarter for January through, through March. We are under, collection of the first half of 2022 property taxes is underway. For those of you who pay your taxes through your mortgage, you may have already seen that go out of your mortgage account. For those of you who pay it directly, your bill, payment of your bill is due by January 21st. We've started to receive advances on those property taxes and we'll continue to monitor collection to make sure we're falling within our, our anticipated projected tax collections for the year. And then finally, I, you know, I always like to say, this is kind of one of those, that time period where we don't have any huge compliance issues. So it's really just a time for us to refocus and start planning for next school year. And one of the things that we'll be doing is making sure that that's a big part of our retreat in, in March. So the first board meeting in March will be when we start to really look at not only next year and planning, but then also kind of refocusing on our five-year forecast as well. So that's the, that's probably our biggest task. We also, I think you've all met the new Assistant Treasurer, Amy Moore. So it's a lot of, the work we're going to be doing is getting her acquainted with Sycamore and getting her involved in a lot of the projects that we have upcoming. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Weber. I need a motion for the approval of the financial report for December 2021.
So moved. Second.
I don't really have, at this point in time, I really don't have anything to add. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Okay. Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
Mr. Commerford.
Hi.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the personnel consent agenda, which includes the denim two HIJK, three A and B.
So moved.
Second.
This is what I know, we don't take questions on personnel consent agenda, but I do want to note that on item two E, we do have Susan Linton listed twice.
As well as Julie Farren.
As well as Julie Farren. So if we can make those adjustments. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Commerford.
Hi.
Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
And Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Motion passes. Moving on to other Board of Education business. I know this is one of Mrs. Weber's favorite roles. I need a motion for the Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council Representative.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the board? Anybody else want to volunteer?
At one time, I am, the city of Blue Ash bought me lunch. Maybe that's because of all those, those tips that we approved, that we have to review at the.
That's the least I can do for you.
Now, let me make sure that was Mrs. Weiss that made that energetic motion.
Mrs. Weiss made the motion.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Commerford.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
And Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Motion passes. Moving on to legislative liaison report.
Okay, here we go. I'm going to make it fast. Let's see if I can do it in under a minute. Um, House Bill 169, the legislature approved and the governor signed into law, H. Bill 169, to disperse federal ESER funds to several agencies. And just as a refresher, ESER funds are elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. One component of the bill will greatly benefit school districts, including Sycamore, which is the enactment of a minimum per student funding level for ESER funds of $1,000 per student. Sycamore will receive approximately $1 million in additional funding because of this legislation. Mrs. Weber, I thought it might just be helpful if you could provide the board, if you know off the top of your head, how much in ESER funds we've received to date about?
I think it's probably somewhere in the range of about 4 million prior to this between. I think we've had three rounds of COVID relief dollars. We've received a grant for, that's targeted for students with disabilities. And we also received some dollars from Hamilton County when they were allocating their local, their local allocation. So this is something that we just heard about in the last couple of weeks. So Mr. Lewis and I will talk about potential need, potential use for those funds. And we'll get, get back with you on, on how we would like to move forward with those.
Thank you. House Bill 126, this was regards the process for local governments to contest property value through the existing board of revision system. The version approved by the Ohio Senate will negatively impact the process for school districts to contest property value for tax purposes. There will, the bill will be presented to the House for concurrence. Mr. Lewis and Mrs. Weber contacted Representative Jessica Miranda to voice Sycamore's opposition to the bill. We were recently notified by her staff that she will vote against the Senate version when it is presented to the House for concurrence. Just two, three other quick things. House Bill 322, this was regarding the teaching of certain current events, race and sex. There has been no movement on this since the last legislative update. House Bill 248, and this is to prohibit mandatory vaccinations, vaccination status disclosures and certain other actions regarding vaccinations. And to name this act, the Vaccine Choice and Anti-Discrimination Act is still in House Committee. Members of our team, Mrs. Weber, Mr. Lewis and the Legislative Liaison typically meet with our respective representatives during the month of February. So I'd like to try to get those on the calendar. We'll reach out to Senators Blessing and Wilson, as well as Representatives Miranda and Brinkman. That's all I have. Mrs. Weber, do you want to add anything?
I have nothing additional there.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Weiss. Sycamore Advisory Commission Report.
Okay, I can take the lead here. Dr. Steger joined me and together we were at the Sycamore Advisory Commission meeting on last Monday, January 10th. It was the last of the Advisory Commission meetings where the district presents to, and then next month, we will receive, we'll re have our first topic presentation. The presentation that was given was all the, always an aviator campaign update by Mr. Lewis and Mr. Lovell. They did an excellent job. And I will say, the commission was very welcoming to Dr. Steger and very happy to have us both there for the remainder of this school year and looking forward to her taking leadership next school year. Anything to add, Dr. Steger?
It was very nice to meet everybody, albeit around a big, big table. The energy was great in the room. The questions were great about the always aviator campaign. So I'm looking forward to working with everybody coming up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lewis, strategic plan update.
Not much of an update, as much as just to revisit our conversation about a potential representative from the board that would want to serve with our team when needed to advise, consult, be available for consultation with the strategic plan. You know, just adjustments and things that revisions that we're going through. So I just wanted to bring that back for consideration. That not, don't necessarily need a decision today, but just want to get, put that back on the radar of the board that we would like to have someone designated to serve in that role.
Why don't, why don't we, I'll consider that and let's talk about it at a future meeting soon.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. The next one is Sycamore Bridges Representative. Sycamore Bridges has asked for a school board member to sit on their advisory board. The commitment is a, a one-hour quarterly meeting. And Mrs. Bitter has volunteered her time to do this. So I appreciate Mrs. Bitter's time and I will put you in contact with the Sycamore Bridges people. And they were very welcoming of having board involvement with us. So thank you, Mrs. Bitter. Audit liaison update.
Yes, I have a, thanks to Mrs. Weber and I met and discussed. We have been part of an audit every year. It started in September, went through December of last year. And it was for, it's for the school year ending June 2021. So it's for July of 2020 to June of 2021. We have the preliminary findings in hand. And I just wanted to take a moment to highlight the preliminary findings from the audit. There were no material weaknesses in internal controls reported at the financial statement level. There were no significant deficiencies in internal controls reported at the financial statement level. There were no reported material non-compliance at the financial statement level. And there were no material weaknesses in internal controls reported for the major federal programs. There were also no significant deficiencies. There were also no significant deficiencies in internal controls reported for major federal programs. The type of programs compliance was unmodified, which is good. That means, means that they could take their decisions without opinion needed. The major programs at the federal level, I would just highlight, there were three that were reviewed, the child nutrition cluster, the coronavirus relief fund and the ESER Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. All were part of the audit. We're considered a low-risk audity and I think I will sum it up by the overall statement that was made. In our opinion, Sycamore Community School District complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements referred to that could directly materially affect its major federal programs for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. There was one finding that we'll talk about for a finding for recovery, which we'll talk about in the next agenda item. But outside of that, I thought it was an excellent audit. It's still preliminary, but I, I would say hats off to Mrs. Weber and her team for another year of excellent audit results.
Congratulations, Mrs. Weber.
Yes, congratulations and thank you for the update.
Congratulations. The only thing that I would add is by working with the audit team and being able to complete the audit and our financial reports, we have applied for both the GFOA, which is Government Finance Officers Association Award and the ASBO Award, which is the Association for School Business Official Award. We've applied for those since the early nineties. And hopefully we'll be able to keep that, keep that streak going.
Thank you very much. I need a motion for the approval of the audit settlement agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Weber?
This comes about as a situation where through the audit process, it was determined that a, one of our employees was paid funds that were not due her. The reason that this occurred is, you know, it, it went back to October when we were working through all of the implementation of COVID payments, so on and so forth. This employee was paid instead of another employee with a very, very similar name. And it was not uncovered by the employee that did not receive the payment either. So we've made restitution, we've made payment to the employee who was do the, the pay for that work. And this agreement works to have the, the employee who was mistakenly paid, no, no mistake on her part, other than based on, you know, the, the time period, not realizing that over almost a year of payment, that that was coming to her. So she will be paying that back based on this agreement over the next year. Once approved, we'll submit this back to the Auditor of State's Office as well as the Attorney General's Office for completion to be able to resolve this, this audit issue and to be able to get the finalization of the audit report.
Any additional questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call a roll.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Comifer.
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter.
Aye.
Dr. Steger.
Aye.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye. Motion passes. I just have two more quick items. First, we will be doing board pictures on February the second. Dr. Stegers, I have not heard back from you. Are you? You are available. Maybe you did it after I looked. So, Mrs. Weber, if you could set that up with Mr. McDaniel's. And the second PTO meetings. Mrs. Bitter and I did participate in the Blue Ash meeting on January thirteenth. So thank you to the Blue Ash PTO. I'm still working on scheduling the other ones. I have not heard a response from the Junior High Sims or Mapledale, which I'll reach out again to. Montgomery has scheduled with us for March the ninth. E H Green would like us there on the second, which happens to be a meeting and a retreat that we have. So I've asked for additional dates from them. And then the high school gave us three dates. One of which is this Friday, followed by February the eleventh and March the eleventh. I'm going to request that we do either February the eleventh or March the eleventh. So I'll be reaching out to the board to get volunteers to participate in those. That's all I have. We will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.